Call to order Tuesday, June 7, 2022, Town Council Committee of the Hall. To order at 6:33. All councilors are present with the exception of Counsel Parker. Onto new business, establishment of tax rate for general fund FYE 2023. That can be found on page two. I make a motion to recommend a resolution to establish the tax rate for the general fund for FYE 2023, so moved. Moved by Melinda, seconded by Bumgarner.
Hello? Hopefully you've all had a chance. Is it not working? Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at the referral. I'll just briefly go through the progression of the budget. The 22 budget was $137 million, and that was the 22, and we required a mill rate of 25.98. The town manager's budget that was proposed was 148,334,375, and that required a mill rate of 22.40, and we were also using $4 million of fund balance. Once the council had reviewed their budget, they made additional cuts of 5.6 million and reduced the budget to 142.6. This budget also used $4 million of fund balance and resulted in a proposed mill rate of 21.16. When we went to the RTM, the RTM made an additional, reduced the council's budget by $45 million. They brought it down to 142,623,947, which was a 3.6% increase over the fiscal '22 adjusted budget. This budget requires a mill rate of 21.28, while using $4 million of unassigned fund balance. The 21.28 mill rate is a decrease of 18%, 18.1% from the current mill rate of 25.98. I've included five attachments, which gives you more of a detail of the cuts that were made by the council as well as the RTM. To the general fund budget is the first attachment. You'll see the 5.6 for the council and the 45,000 for the RTM, bringing it down to the 142.6. The next attachments were all of the changes that were made to the CIP projects, and the bottom line gives you the total of, what was approved was 3.7 million for the general fund and 2 million of water pollution control projects. And the next two pages are just a recap from the '21 that brings you to the RTM budget, the '22 adjusted, our estimates, we make estimates in March and estimates again in June, department's requests, town manager's budget, town council and RTM. It's just a progression that I just reviewed on the, at the beginning. The next page is the calculation of the mill rate of how we get to the 21.28. It's based on the grand list, and we reduce the adopted budget by any operating revenues, and we, that determines the amount of funds that must be raised. We reduce that by the 4 million, determines the amount of taxes that must be raised, which is 20, excuse me, 97,068,085. And that results in a mill rate based on a formula, but we do not, we set the mill rate not at 100% because we never collect 100% of taxes. So the collection rate is based on a three to five-year average of 98.9%, which results in the 21.28 mill rate. The very bottom of this report gives you an analysis of fund balance. We started, we ended June of '21 with approximately 28 million. We expect, based on current estimates, that we'll increase that by 3.7 million at the end of this fiscal year, resulting in a 32 million. Using $4 million of fund balance will result in a $28 million fund balance, which is 20% of the existing operation, excuse me, of the appropriations. And then the final sheet is just an analysis of the current mill rate compared to the proposed mill rate and the impact on taxes that are assessed at 100,000, 200,000, 300,000. That's if you know the value of your assessment, you can kind of use those numbers to get a rough estimate of what your taxes might be. So that's my referral. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy, for that report. Appreciate all your work on that, as I know it takes a lot of time. My question is, looking at the fund balance and looking at property values in our town, we're saying the mill rate is going down, but the property taxed is actually going up for folks. Are we using the appropriate amount of fund balance? It looks like other properties in our town that are not personal property, there's more money being applied, not necessarily applied, their rates are lower than the homeowners as to how that's working. Could you explain that figure a little bit better? And is there a chance that we should be applying more fund balance to help offset that? Some have spoke also in the town that, looking at property taxes in the past, that they brought it in in a sliding, in a way where we can gradually, you know, create that. For some homeowners, it's going to be an $800 increase; for some, it's going to be triple or double that. So as we say the mill rate's going down, it, the property tax is going up under the new assessment, and have we looked at any way to consider that in this section?
Well, what you're referring to is a phase-in of the, of a grand list, of a revaluation, and we're beyond that point. We cannot phase in at this point. The use of the $4 million is a figure that the town manager and I had had several discussions that we were comfortable with. It is the equivalent of about .88 of a mil that we reduce that by. So I had not considered increasing the fund balance, or we had not considered going over the $4 million.
And what if we did? If we, I guess the town manager, do you have any other suggestions on how we can help cut costs for taxpayers, for homeownership in this town? If we were, and how are we beyond the, the phase-in part? Could you speak to that?
Well, that one's best answered by Ms. Landry, but Director Landry.
I guess for Cindy Landry, why are we beyond the phase-in section, then?
Because we have to set the mill rate by June 9th, and we would not have time at this point to begin a phase-in.
Right. I just think next year, though, we should start talking about that sooner. I guess I, I can speak for myself, it's something I could have brought up as well, but I think when we're presenting it to the council, I think that should be one of the options on the table as a possibility. It was not presented, and now, obviously, we're beyond that point. But I do think in the future, it should be something that was, it was used, and I think it should be presented as a part of the package.
Just the next revale will be in five years.
Yeah, it should be. And John, do you have any recommendations on the fund balance numbers and ways, I mean, are we using enough of the fund balance to offset?
It's what we were comfortable with, like Director Landry said, I'd be leery to go above that. And 4 million's a pretty healthy amount to use. Because what we don't want to do is use so much that we then have a big jump to next year in taxes, so I don't, I wouldn't recommend going above that.
And where's our fund balance currently being left at? At what percent are we leaving that at?
Assuming everything goes to prediction, at the end of this next budget year, using the 4 million, we'd be at 19%.
It's up to 20. It's 20 now.
Oh, now 20. Okay, now 20.
20%.
Thank you for your answers.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You gave a spreadsheet stating what the possibility of, the proposed mill rate would be and the effect it would have on people's taxes. So what was, so you have here, like, as an example, if you pay, if your house is assessed at 100,000, your taxes would go down $470. Although, with the assessment, you probably went up by, I don't know, I've heard various, I don't know what the average is. I've heard people as high as saying 40 or 60%. So I'm not sure what the average was as an increase. Can you tell us?
I believe that we thought the average, I don't want to speak out of.
It was around 23, 24.
Yeah.
Someone read around 23, 24.
So if, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you're, if you went up from like 100,000, you were at 100,000, you went to 125,000, and currently with the decrease in the mill rate, you'd be saving 470, how much would your taxes go up? Do you, would you, or even go down?
Yeah, if it remained at $100,000, do you have your calculator? You doing it? And your, and your assessment increased to 125? Are you doing the 21, 28? He's doing it on his calculator. I did not bring my calculator tonight.
The new amount would be 2,772.50, so taking out the original, what was it, 2,598? So it'd be about $174.50.
A year?
Yes.
And that would be going up or a decrease?
Increase, if it went, if the assessment went up to 125,000.
Usually, when you have a revale, that's what happens, your assessments go up and your revale goes off, goes down, no, not your revale, excuse me, your mill rate goes down to kind of offset that increase.
Right. So $174. And we are on what year of bonding for the schools now?
We did our, what we hoped would be our final bonding last year. We are still waiting to receive the final grant payments from the state, the 11% that they have withheld. We could or could not have an additional bonding, depending on what the state deems is eligible and ineligible.
So basically, there hasn't been a, since I've been on the council, I haven't seen a substantial increase in taxes, even though we've built three new schools.
Right.
So.
The mill rate has not increased what we had originally estimated it would be when we presented that in, I believe, 2016 with the referendum.
Right. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Counsel Borlon?
Yeah, I guess my concern is, in looking at this, it's great to have a hefty fund balance, but it's one thing to make sure we're using it to, you know, represent the community who paid into that fund balance with their taxes and other revenues. My concern, I understand $174 might not be a lot to many, but people who are retired and on fixed incomes, depending on what their house is assessed at, these numbers that go up do affect them because some do not have state pensions, and there's no colas on those, and so they're on fixed income. So for some, that $174 is their prescription drugs; for some, that is their food; for some, that is their gas, with the gas prices. And so I guess what I was thinking and just hoping, you know, that there was a way that we could slowly phase things in, and that's why I was asking again, if we're beyond that point, then that's understandable, but it is definitely something to keep on the radar, and I hope in future, in five years, that it's just presented as an option and that we have those numbers and we talk about it. Also, I, I think it's, you know, you know, important to look at the fund balance, and it's great that we're at 19. I remember years ago, we were barely at, what was it, 12? I don't know, John, when you came on, 11. So we can get by, and I'm not saying we should spend it down, but is there a way to use the fund balance to phase in by putting, using some of that fund balance money to slowly phase in still?
That's part of what we're doing with the 4 million, is to phase it in, right?
And you think, and you stated that you don't think we should go higher. I mean, what would 5 million do to these numbers if we used? I mean, really, I'm just looking, I'm just trying to get a figure to see what that number would change.
That would be a million dollar.
Yeah.
One mil is equivalent to 4.5 million dollars.
Okay.
So if you wanted to cut a mil, you'd have to use 8.5 million dollars of fund balance.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Not seeing any further discussion. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimous, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. And I will note that Counsel Parker arrived shortly after the beginning of the meeting at 6:35. Onto establishment of tax rate for Umford Cove District Fund FYE 2023. Can be found on page nine.
There was a correction sent out today, so the, I, I sent, it was, went out in the email today, but also I passed out a hard copy.
It's for the resolution.
Oh, sorry, that's for the resolution. Sorry about that. Getting ahead of myself.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to establish the tax rate for Umford Cove District Fund for FYE 2023, so moved.
Second, Borlon?
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Borlon. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimous, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto establishment of tax rate for Groton Sewer District FYE 2023. Page 10. I make a motion to recommend a resolution to establish the tax rate for Groton Sewer District Fund for FYE 2023, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Bumgarner. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimous, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto affordable housing plan, starts on page 11. Thank you. We've got Director Landry here for some, some background.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Tonight before you was the town's Affordable Housing Plan. We brought this back to the council earlier this winter. We held a public hearing on this document in April, and looking to move this forward for adoption. The one comment that we received from the council was one of the implementation items to move that up from a medium term to a short-term implementation goal as it related to promoting our rental assistance program. Otherwise, looking for any questions or additional changes the council wants.
All right, thank you. Counsel Bumgarner?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. I understand that the, fortunately, we did not meet the deadline to submit an Affordable Housing Plan for, I believe it was June 1st, in large part because we've had a plethora of meetings where we've had no shortage of things to talk about and discuss and deliberate on. But with that said, if we approve this plan this evening and then during our regular council meeting, the plan, we then submit that plan to the state of Connecticut. But just for kind of paperwork purposes, did we inform the state of Connecticut that we would be submitting the plan shortly?
So we actually submitted a draft plan to them much earlier, and so they are aware that we have the plan, that we're working on the plan, and we'll, we plan on submitting it tomorrow if all goes according to plan tonight.
And I believe they have a procedure where you put a letter with it just to explain. This isn't the first time out there towns have had this happen, so there's a process.
I read more than half of the towns in the state of Connecticut didn't meet the deadline. And I think largely, probably for many of the same reasons we did.
In addition, not that we want to miss deadlines, but there's actually no penalty for missing the deadline, and the real goal of this plan, you know, across the straight, the state, is how can we create more affordable housing as well as keep what we have in a good state and make sure that we have housing for people in town? The state's goal is that each municipality should have 10% of its year-round housing stock is affordable. We have over 23% of our year-round housing stock is affordable, so we're well above and beyond the goal, but there's still a lot of other things that we can do for affordable housing within Groton as a whole.
Now, I understand the Planning and Zoning Commission rightfully recommended including three very key provisions, and I'll read the following. The plan should allow, I'm sorry, the plan should clearly articulate that it applies to the whole town, inclusive of all zoning districts. Energy efficiency measures should be addressed in the plan. The negative impact for availability of existing housing caused by short-term rentals should be addressed in the plan. I wholeheartedly stand by all three of those recommendations as a counselor, especially the last recommendation, and I'm sure we'll hear from a lot of folks tonight, but the great concern and reality that short-term rentals are very much reducing the available housing stock, especially in Mystic. In a lot of cases, homes that are relatively affordable for families to live in and move in are now being taken over by essential, essentially hotel groups. And so if we can codify that within our Affordable Housing Plan in stating that really short-term rentals are creating a negative effect in terms of the availability of affordability or affordable housing, housing that's affordable, depending on how you word it, I think it's a great recommendation. Just quickly, in terms of more deed-restricted affordable housing, I'll say in the case of like Branford Manor, you know, obviously deed-restricted in that housing, you know, folks living there utilizing Section 8 housing vouchers, but does this plan speak to the improvement in quality of that housing stock? Sorry, Jen. Does this plan speak to the improvement of the existing deed-restricted housing stock that we have? Case in point, Branford Manor, many residents have expressed a significant concern about the health and safety of, of those buildings. So how, how can this plan address those, those concerns?
So I don't have the specific page in front of me, but the, the plan does speak generally to making sure people have safe and livable housing, as well as all of the policies that we have in place dealing with fair housing fall into that same category. So a lot of those things are items that we are already addressing.
Excellent. But the plan does speak to improving existing affordable housing stock?
Reinvesting in our existing affordable housing stock and our existing housing stock.
Excellent. All right, thank you, John.
Thank you, Counsel Borlon.
Thank you. I just think this is an important plan, and it's definitely something that's important for Groton. And I guess one of the things and questions I had gotten from constituents in the town of Groton, and I did try to go through here, what are we considering affordable? At what price point?
So there's different affordability thresholds. I can try to look through the plan to see if we have an actual number, but a lot of it, it actually, it relates to area median income, so, and that number is constantly changing. So it is a little bit of a moving target, but.
When you say the percent of affordable housing, what number are we considering affordable for rents under that percent?
So it would be 80% of area median income for what falls into that category.
The other discrepancy or concern that I felt has need to be addressed for many years in the town of Groton is the fact that affordable, or some call low-income or Section 8 housing, is grouped on one section of town. And the movement forward is, when you look out west, we need to be moving towards the model as we're bringing economic development into town, which a lot of our economic development has been housing, but not affordable housing, very expensive housing. And what people are doing out west is bringing in the model where you have mixed-use housing, where no matter what your income is, nobody would know that you're low-income, high-income. So you have a staggered approach of low-income, median income, and maybe high-income, all in a subsection of housing somewhere. One of the things that we have, and we say that we meet this by a certain percent, we have segregated affordable housing in this town. It's heavy on one side of our town, and then we're looking at the city and the town, but when I look towards Mystic and other sections, I can barely see affordable housing in that area, and especially next-to-no low-income housing. So the plan that I want to support is a plan that's going to allow people of all demographics to live just equally amongst everybody in the, in the town of Groton. And that is something that I've heard from a lot of people, and I too, myself, have experienced, and people feel that they are judged and looked down upon for having to live in certain sections because the way this town originally started, long before we were a part of this, they said, let's put them here and all of it here. And so I want this plan to be robust, that we're looking towards making sure we're moving that vision beyond the high-rise in one section or the low-income housing only in one section, where people have quality of life throughout the whole-town grove. Does that plan address that concern?
This plan does address in the future, looking at zoning techniques such as inclusionary housing and mixing affordability into future development.
Right, and also making sure that the affordable housing also meets the same standards for, you know, all of these other requirements of, you know, energy efficient. I mean, folks in lower-income housing need those types of amenities more than someone else, and making sure that we're using, you know, decreasing our carbon footprint mainly in those areas where, you know, they're not, these things aren't being built with those things in mind, like solar panels and other resources to help. So there's some gray areas here, and I do think that we should be broadening our horizons and on, definitely from an economic standpoint, really looking at ways that we can start to bring in mixed-use income housing so that we can then diversify our community. And what that does will allow people to work as a community and, and build a community by helping one another. And, and that's the model Groton has yet to adopt, and I have, I've seen very few next-to-none mixed-income housing here, and everything that's coming in recently is, thank you.
Counsel's time has expired.
All very expensive. So if you could speak, can you just answer the rest of my question, please? Thank you.
Director Reiner?
So I just want to make sure that's the plan, that we're, we're looking at that.
Yes, so as I stated, with inclusionary zoning, that's something that will be incorporated in the future. We've also seen very little new housing development in town in the past 10 years. There's been proposals and talk about additional housing, but there hasn't been a lot constructed. But as things do move forward and happen, energy efficiency is required as part of the new building code, so for new development, and a lot of the projects that we work on with our Community Development Block Grant, we look to improve the existing units with energy efficiency.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Director Reiner, for this, this report. So how often do we do this report? Is this a yearly report, or?
So this is our first one, and moving forward every five years, we're supposed to do an Affordable Housing Plan. The state of Connecticut gave, frankly, very little guidance of what they wanted in the Affordable Housing Plan. We could have put together a four-page document that said, you know, had a few general goals, and that would have been it. We went a little above and beyond with that. There's a lot of recommendations. We really analyzed what the housing situation is in Groton and didn't just say, oh, we have more than 10%. We're all set. We tried to look at affordable housing, both with, as I refer to it with a capital A, like deed-restricted affordable housing, but also affordable housing, which is often referred to as that missing-middle housing, which may not be deed-restricted or permanently-protected affordable housing, but it's still housing that is affordable to households that fall within that income range. Because as you look through the data, there's a lot of constrained households in town paying more than 30% of their annual income towards housing costs, and that's kind of what the goal is. Some of that gets into supply and demand, which is also, you know, in addition to this Affordable Housing Plan, we also did a housing market study looking at what is the need for housing within the town. And, you know, the numbers on that were pretty staggering.
Do you think, in your opinion, a lot of the dates in here go to 2019 and some go to 2021, and we had such tremendous changes because of COVID and real estate prices? Do you think these things are still fairly current in the numbers?
Yeah, this was the best available data we had at the point in time. So this plan was finished right at the end of 2021, a little bit right before the election, but then it just took a little bit of time to kind of run it through the adoption process. We have a long process to hold public hearings and how things are scheduled. But at the time, and still, this is very good current data. Yes, it's a couple of years old. I think for the next plan, we will then see the impacts of what COVID did to our housing stock. And I think we're still all trying to get our arms around that. I mean, I think in some places, we've seen the housing market increase by 40% or more, others it might be 10% or 20%. And that's something that, as soon as you start doing a plan and take a snapshot of data, it's already old and outdated. So it's, we can keep spinning our wheels and going back to wait for the perfect data set, but you just try to look at the best available data you have at the time, take that and move forward.
And then I just, one, it was just a comment, I think, on, for the next report, is I would love to see a column here of where Connecticut is. Like, this is Groton looking at Groton, but it doesn't tell me where we sort of fit in the big picture. Are we above Groton, or are we above Connecticut, or below, or are we the average? And I think on many of these charts, you could just be another column that just says this is sort of where Connecticut sits, and we then can judge, are we doing, I don't, what I don't know here is are these good numbers or bad numbers? Are we doing what we should be doing, or do we need to improve in areas? And I think if we just had a benchmark to kind of compare the state, I think it's probably as much as we need, but it's an easy thing, I think, for them to add in on the next report and just put up, give us a Connecticut benchmark, so we know where we're doing good or we're not doing good, and then we can make a call from there on what to do. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Franco.
Thank you. So I only have five minutes to talk. So there's the inclusionary zone, and is planning and zoning working on this, or will they be working on this? Is this going to be one of their topics?
That will be one of their future topics. There's a number of zoning changes that they're contemplating and starting to work on now.
Are they required to make these changes, or is it at their discretion?
At their discretion.
Thank you. And the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that I read about in here, how will this be set up? Who will be part and involved in this process?
That's for the council to decide. So, you know, again, this plan is a plan. It's an idea, it's a concept. Putting the plan together is the easy part, implementing the plan is the very difficult part. Getting into the nuts and bolts, what is an inclusionary zoning regulation going to say? How are we going to, you know, regulate or encourage more of that missing-middle housing? You know, allowing duplexes in areas where there's sewer and water, which was something that was extensively discussed during our zoning regulation rewrite process. And there are a lot of areas that, at the time, the commission decided not to allow duplexes. That's something that can be done, but it all depends on, you know, it's that where that rubber hits the road. So the same thing, an affordable housing trust fund, that's something the council can set up. Where's the money going to come from? How do we start that? How do you put that oversight on that together?
Also, leveraging public land for housing production. Is this basically stating that the town should be purchasing land or the housing, the housing development?
Groton Housing Authority.
Groton Housing Development?
Um...
I mean, how does this work? I mean, because there was land just next door to this here that was for sale, and even if the town didn't know what to do with it at the time, I would personally always think that that's always a possibility, to put senior housing on that type of land, which is very conveniently located for seniors.
So those are all items, I think, that are up for further discussion. So there's always this discussion of how do you have these public-private partnerships? How do you bring developers together to work with public entities, affordable housing developers or private developers? Sometimes private developers are affordable housing developers, but somebody has to build and develop that housing. And looking at other town assets, town excess property, if you look at, excuse me, some of the land adjacent to some of the development authority that the Groton Housing Authority has, there is some excess property there that could be utilized, but that's something we need to go through, do kind of a GIS analysis, geographic information systems, look at the land, look at the constraints, what are the infrastructure that's available, and are those things that the town wants to see developed into housing? Or is it better used for open space or park and recreation land? I mean, last night we had a meeting about Claude Chester, you know, what's the future use of that? You know, I think there's a strong push towards athletic fields. So again, all of these are, should be part of the discussion and debate because there's so many conflicting, or competing, that's the word I'm looking for, potential uses for each one of these pieces of property.
Right. And that goes into my next question of how do we bring in a supply of affordable housing when the market, in my mind, the market normally dictates what developers want to build and what they want to charge? So, other than potentially tax abatements, how do you lure them to our community?
So generally, affordable housing is built with some level of subsidy, and that's where that public-private partnership comes in. So whether the town is saying, we have this X acreage of land, we're willing to sell this to, and it's, they don't have to spend $2 million knocking down a school, grading it, doing all kinds of site improvements. It's something that's relatively easy. We would sell this for a dollar if someone was willing to build 50% of the housing units here is affordable, or 25% is affordable. All right? That's just kind of picking something out of the sky. That's one mechanism of doing something like that. There are a lot of ways of taking care of that.
All right. And...
We could spend nights talking about different ways of addressing affordable housing, and I have a feeling we will over the next couple of years.
Right. And are there currently any tax abatements or freezes on rehab projects?
So for our rehab, if properties are deed-restricted as affordable, they are assessed at a lower value. But as far as our rehab projects, I'm not entirely sure.
Like, it was mentioned in here about rehab redevelopment without displacement and possibly having funds for that, and they had notated possibly the Quantic Bridge as a good example of a location that would be good for rehabbing without displacement.
Yes. To my knowledge, I don't believe that we're doing any tax abatements on, say, single-family homes that are not deed-restricted. But that might be a way of, you know, what is, what's always the problem? It's coming up with the funding to do this, so one of the mechanisms there, and I've heard this discussed in other municipalities, is would you give someone a tax break for X amount of years if they built an accessory apartment that they then said are guaranteed they're going to rent it at an affordable rate for 10 years? The same could go into rehabbing a property if it was rented at a low-income rate.
Okay. And I think that also goes into the trust fund type of thing, and something that our council can delve into deeper in the future. And I appreciate all your answers. Thank you very much. It was very insightful.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me? Yes? Okay. This plan is ultimately to address our housing needs and looking how to address and fix the lack of housing in Groton, correct?
The, making sure we're addressing our housing needs and making sure that we have adequate affordable housing for our population and for the future.
Great. Okay. Is it fair to say this document is a work in progress? Can it be adapted as we go?
All of the plans and regulations that we do are always a work in process. I always try to think of them as they're living, breathing documents. They're always going to change. There's always going to be updated data or new information that comes along.
Okay. And the reason why I ask that, because, you know, you spoke of planning and zoning potentially taking this issue up, and then they could identify a need somewhere, and then ultimately they could act on that, or the town council could act on that. And then we could use this plan as a guide to find means to address these things. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Great. And would you say this plan is specifically tailored to address Groton's needs and not some generic affordable housing of other communities?
Correct. We really got into the nitty-gritty of what Groton needs for this plan. Again, we could have taken an easy approach, and we already have enough affordable housing. Yeah, let's just keep our rehab program up and do inclusionary zoning and, you know, everything's good. But we tried to take a much deeper dive, really address not just affordable housing, but where our projected population is growing, our future employment, and how can we best address those needs now and in the future.
Great. Thank you very much for your answers.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Yes, just two quick comments, because I know we have a long night. But I understand the Conservation Commission recommended changing language within the document, the term "public land" as you described, to "available town-owned land." Just given that, they wrote, "The vast majority of the 254 town-owned or public land parcels are set aside into one of three open space categories of dedicated open space, managed open space, or facility open space." And so by making this change, it's to properly identify the only parcels that can be considered under this recommendation and to ensure that dedicated open space is not utilized for development, which I think is obviously a very important distinction. We do have a lot of dedicated open space with conservation easements, and that is open space that needs to be protected, you know, for forests, for trees, for hiking, et cetera. Protection and perpetuity not to be developed into housing. There's plenty of other spaces in town that are not, don't have conservation easements that certainly could be utilized for affordable or other types of housing.
Correct. We wouldn't be looking to develop housing on parcels that are already protected, that have deed restrictions on them for conservation land, et cetera.
Exactly. And just in, for the record, and then the other part, just skimming through ADUs, maybe not a question really, but I guess it is, ADUs can be utilized as a tool to, you know, to promote affordable housing, ADUs being accessory dwelling units?
Yeah. See, you're giving yourself away as a planner, and now you're using PLAN A acronyms. So yeah, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which we've always allowed within the town by right in residential zoning districts, and those can be utilized to meet our affordable housing, both capital A and lowercase a, housing needs. There are some municipalities in California now which require people to build two accessory, two accessory dwelling units per household to help address some of their affordable housing needs.
Excellent. Thank you, John.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. Thanks for the full review and the review with the council and the public hearings. It's a great detail. Just, I just had a quick question. You had mentioned earlier about the rental assistance program, and this council did determine, I think, we were going to move it into short-term.
Correct.
This document has it in midterm. Will that change be made as part of this, or will it be made in the future?
Yes. Okay. I didn't want to start changing the document as a draft, depending on what the council wanted to adopt. If other changes came up, I'm just worried about version control being out there. So that's something that, we received that feedback from the council. We will make that change.
Great. And then one other question. I had thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we had also discussed implementing the first-time homebuyer program in the short-term. I think we had discussion that we were thinking about using ARPA money, and that's why we wanted to move it into the first column. So I'm not sure if this council remembers that, but if that's the case, would that be, would that change be proposed as well?
Yes.
Okay. So was every, does everybody recall that? I think those are the two changes we had. Okay.
And we voted on them?
I don't know if we officially voted, but we discussed it, and it was at great length. I don't know.
Yeah, that was at the first meeting that we had this winter.
Yes.
When we went over the plan, and that, I think that was recommended by the council.
Okay. See, no further... Yes, Counselor Parker?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
We can't hear you.
Okay, we'll get on that. Sorry about that.
It's muted.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a, can we clarify, can we state, can you state for the record those changes? Just because I think the audience didn't hear those changes were going to be made.
So the two changes that you spoke of, I think it was, hold on, was it page 52, 54? Page 52 in the summary recommendations matrix key to move both the rehab redevelopment without, sorry, the promoting rental assistance program up from midterm to short-term, as well as the, hold on a second here. Just looking. Implementing the first-time homebuyer program from midterm to short-term.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. See, no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstained.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Franco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimously nine in favor. We are adjourned at 7:18. A call to order, the Tuesday, June 7, 2022, Town Council regular meeting to order at All councils are present.
Oh, sorry. Madam Clark.
Okay. So we have Mayor Melendez, Counselor Bordelon, Counselor Baumgartner, Counselor Casiri, Counselor Franco, Counselor Jones, Counselor McBride, Counselor Parker, and Counselor Westervelt. Everybody's here, plus the town manager and I, and finance director.
Thank you. Will everyone please stand for the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
It's in our pocket.
Thank you. Onto recognitions, awards, and memorials. Proclamation recognizing Pride Month. Counselor Casiri, would you do the pleasure?
Proclamation recognizing Pride Month, whereas Groton celebrates Pride Month with a pride flag-raising ceremony to honor the history of the LGBTQ+ liberation movement and to publicly express its desire to fully include and welcome members of the LGBTQ+ community as essential to our community, and whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, celebration, and support for our LGBTQ+ community, and whereas members of the LGBTQ+ community have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country, and whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Groton's LGBTQ+ community and is an opportunity for community members to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equitable practices. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Groton Town Council does hereby proclaim the month of June 2021, 2022, as Pride Month in support of our LGBTQ+ community. And be it further resolved, the rainbow flag will be raised on this day, June 1, 2022, recognizing all LGBTQ+ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods makes Groton a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we have no public hearings. So on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens to address the council. Please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-CT.gov by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Okay, so I got the list in front of me here. First, I have Sandra Fetters. Just your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Fetters. I live at 28 Branford Ave in Groton. I'm here to address the mold that I've been living with since August. I've been in and out of the hospital. My lips were turning blue to where I couldn't breathe anymore. I have two mold reports, one done by Branford, which was only a visual, and one done that I paid for myself. The one that I done, paid for myself, came back with four toxic molds in my apartment. These guys have totally ignored my report, and they are just going on theirs and theirs alone. They're talking about cleaning my furniture and bringing it to a new apartment, which I had called the cleaning company that Donna and Heather Phillips told me that United Cleaning Restoration was coming along with Gardener Moving Company was coming in yesterday to clean my furniture. I called them to find out that Branford Manor failed to tell them about my mold report, which is another whole situation for these guys to come in and clean. I also notified Gardener Moving Company as well, and they were, didn't know about the mold. Branford Manor also did not inform them about my mold report. I've expressed to Donna that I am, this is extremely hazardous to my health and my family. My other daughter has been having seizures for five years now. She's stopped having seizures since we've been at that hotel that I'm living at. We've been in the hotel that Branford is paying for since we've been in there since May 17. I want to go home at some point. I want my furniture back. I want my things back, and I want my children's health to be better. My daughter is type 1 diabetic. She also has a lot of autoimmune and an inflammation disease that we've been chasing for the most last three years, and I feel it's all due to this mold. They are cutting corners on our health, and they are just cutting corners on everything that they need to do for themselves and not what they need to do for us. I have a fatal reaction to this mold. I have an allergist that is currently treating me. I have asthma now, which I never did before. I can't breathe on hot days. I can't breathe when somebody's wearing perfume. I can't breathe when I'm taking a shower. This is all due to this mold. I have these two reports, if anybody would like to have them, because we're struggling over there, and I've been dying in that apartment since August. My daughter watching me turn blue and fighting for air. Why, these guys are just ignoring our complaints, and I fear that at some point, one of us is going to pay for it with their lives, and I don't want it to be me, my kids, or anybody else who's currently living there. So if you guys could address this or help us out, that would be fantastic. I have, I've been in touch with Deidre Richardson. She is the account exec for HUD, along with Zach Simmons. He is, I guess, one of the account execs for the property, along with consultants, my allergist. I have also hired counsel for myself in this matter. I just, I don't know what else to do. I'm at a loss, and I'm struggling to breathe every day. And the fact that they only did a visual on that mold everywhere except for where I told them there was mold at, I feel that the report is absolutely inconclusive and does not pertain to what's going on in that apartment. I find it criminal. I find it negligent, and I'm very upset with everything. That mold area that my mold guy had tested before, he said it looked like there was three gouges in there. So he saw actual mold in there. My daughter and my mother were in that apartment that day because I was in the emergency room trying to breathe. The lady that was with them said we found mold up here, and after that, it was hushed and quieted up. I just don't understand how these people can operate and just dismiss this. I mean, it's actually, and what I was getting to is about where my mold guy had tested. I went back into that apartment the other day, which was a mistake because it put me into a massive asthma episode. That area now is completely different from the first time that I saw it with Zach. That, I mean, Joel, that was the guy that did my mold report, and he said that he will testify that. That mold, that area now has been cleaned, and it's been cleared of everything that, what he did. That's why I didn't trust these guys. That's why I hired my own mold guy. And if I didn't do that, they were going to stick me with my furniture and a new apartment to suffocate and break back to the same situation that I was at in before. This is just intolerable, and it's inhumane, and I don't want to die in these apartments ever again, and I just want my furniture being cleaned like it's supposed to. I had a guy come down. His name was Daniel from Coastal Cleaning. I had spoken with him on Monday because I told those guys, nobody's going in my apartment until I get myself, my property damage situated. And with the report that I gave him, he said there's supposed to be special heparin and everything else in there that Branford Manor was not gonna, not even address. They were only doing a visual. I have an actual mold report that says different. I have four toxic molds in that apartment that is killing me, and I have them right here if anybody wants these.
Thank you.
That's all I got to say, you guys. I thank you very much for listening. This is an ongoing problem, and I hope it can get straightened out before somebody has to pay the price. Ultimate with your life. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we possibly allow the residents with children to go first so that they have the option to leave after, if that's okay?
Sure.
I'm sorry, there's just quite a bit of people with children, young children here tonight.
Sure. If anyone has a child and would like to speak at this time? Just need your name and address for the record.
So my name is Marilyn Monagas. I'm at 242 Branford Ave. I do believe I'm listed as number 14.
Thank you.
I am here to also attest to the Branford Manor community mold situation. There has been a significant abatement subsidy applied to this community. Unfortunately, I do agree, they're taking many shortcuts. They've recently cited to HUD that they need to close our basements for safety reasons. I also have mold in my apartment from the basement all the way up to the second floor bathroom. They come in, they do quick cleanups. As she said, they'll just do visual assessments, unfortunately, after they paint it over within the week. The mold spores are already presenting through. They've come through and taking chunks of my basement wall out, which only exposes more insulation, more fibers, and honestly creates more mold. They've come in with fans, other, other options. But again, as she said, they cut corners. They use intimidation factors. They'll bring up things that are not related to the mold, things that, in all honesty, are not even related to the one-year lease that you signed. They'll find things from years ago to try to, you know, distract, to redirect states, the tenants' issues. I have actually been moved from a previous apartment at 155 due to the mold. My son had developed asthma. I'd gotten pneumonia. We had doctor's reports. They moved us to 242 where we are presently now. I've been a resident there for 12 years. Unfortunately, for the last three years, as I've said, they've simply come in to repaint this mold issue that we're having. They continually redirect. I had to contact HUD in specific after they tried to use intimidation factors. Rachel, the signing lease herself, came to my apartment, forced me to sign paperwork when I told her I was not comfortable, that the language that they were using was not only incorrect, but there was a lot of other sheets and things that they had added that I said were false information. She said in order to keep my subsidy and my apartment, I would have to sign the papers. I signed them, and then eventually, within three days of doing that, and reporting, writing the office, and saying that I, I was forced to sign it by Rachel, and that the information that I signed for, I signed knowing that that information was incorrect. I voiced these concerns to her. She said there was a deadline. I needed to sign it by that deadline. They proceeded with the eviction process, which I then had to go into court. I thankfully won. Again, like I said, now every time I call, they do send maintenance, but there are more than just the safety hazards with the mold. There are domestic violence cases in our area, substantial amounts. If they close the basements, the nails that go into the doors are less than half an inch, maybe a quarter inch alone. Those hollow doors can be kicked down, which has happened in my apartment. There are three domestic violence cases that are currently around my apartment. If they got our basements even to try to help with the mold, it now creates an entire accessibility to our units. You can kick down those hollow doors, enter our apartments, and violate the residents that are in that one section. I live towards the swamp in the back, where unfortunately, police, fire, and hospital services do take a while to find our building to provide us aid. I've had my building personally broken into when the structure of the frame was violated. They took over six months to come in and re-put in board. As I said, they retacked in those same quarter-inch nails. To this day, my door, you can push it in. The wind pushes it in some days. I complain about it frequently. They said that they'll send somebody. They're short-staffed with all the renovations. There's over 400 apartments. They'll get to it when they get to it, but they never get to it. So I agree. There's not only just mold and health issues, safety issues, just concerns in all regards. They said they're going to do inspections to make sure there's no mold. I have a leaky pipe that I report every three weeks, every 21 days. I do the math on my calendar. They come, they put the Flexi Tape, and guess what? In three weeks, that tape is gone. It puddles back. The mold is substantial. I go down there every day to bleach spray, to salt spray, to put down fans. They've provided a fan, yes, but now they've come and taken that fan, so now I use my own fan. Those spores are coming up. Both of my sons have asthma. I catch pneumonia every year. They're cutting corners, and this town abates and subsidizes them to an extent that I feel that the residents shouldn't be punished to this level. And if they cannot use those intimidation factors, which they could not in my case, although they attempted to, they still find ways to punish you. In the office, they, they speak nonsense in front of other residents, and I can attest that other residents have heard about my apartment in the office, which is very offensive to me and violates our privacy. Unfortunately, having three children in a two-bedroom truly limits our space, so them taking that space from us not only violates our ability to have storage and all these things, but the truth of it is, is their denial of what's occurring in these basements, the lack of airflow, the substantial mold, the budget cuts, because when their permits were pulled or their workers weren't documented, the residents suffered. I suffered. My children suffered. My apartment is suffering. It is falling apart, and I do my best to hold it together, but now they block off that space. There's nothing I can do to even help them manage it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If anyone else with a child would like to speak at this time, please approach the podium. Just need your name and address for the record.
Hi, Catherine Pruitt, 161 Mather Avenue. I am new to Branford. About seven months now I've been living there. When I moved in, I knew I did not have a basement. I knew of the prior mold issues. Been hearing of them since I was growing up in New London. Being a single mother, there are not very many options in the area, all the way from Norwich, all the way through. Not very many options. Took me a year and a half to get into this apartment, at which point I was sharing one bedroom with my two children in my parents' home. When I finally got into Branford, I moved into an apartment that had, yay, a park next to it, which was supposed to be worked on and fixed, and at this point still has a single slide, a six-inch cement wall fully surrounding the play area, which is completely hazardous to all of the children in the area, because we all know children run full force. So that has not been restricted off. And on top of that, now I have a black spot above my shower, less, less than, no, I'm just now at seven months, a black spot above my shower that I feel is mold coming through the paint. My walls run yellow all the way around in my bathroom. It's a yellow... What I feel is from tobacco, from cigarette smoke in the apartment. It almost looks like that, but they claim it's from the metal that's in the bathroom. It's, it's normal. It happens all the time. Just clean it. Seven years in Laurel on my own Laurel Drive in New London, I never once had that issue. It's a new thing for me, running paint. It's disgusting. I have to clean that every two weeks probably. I would just like to echo what every other resident here who has lived in Branford much longer than me says. We feel ignored. We feel trampled on. We feel as if we are not taken seriously because we are low income, or maybe not even low income. There are people who pay $1,200 to $1,500 in rent to live in an apartment that has mold growing in the basement, in the bathrooms, in the hallways. I mean, it is dehumanizing, and we're tired of it. And they have been complaining for years and years and years and years, and they are being ignored. They are being ignored, and it's, it's horrible that, that this town is let it go this bad and still allows it to happen. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next on my list, I have Mike Sarasin, I believe.
We have to leave.
Yes, leave. Okay. I also have a Renee, the same last name. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Renee Madison, 27 Gravel Street. So I have a couple of topics I wanted to discuss. I guess the first one I'm going to jump in on is the topic of the short-term parking signs. I have been trying for the last four years. I've sent letters in. I've, I mean, it's just gotten ridiculous. I'm on Gravel Street. I've got, I've got parking going. And I understand that we're going to have park, people parking. It's touristy, and I have no problem with people parking in front of my house, but not townspeople that are working or workers downtown that are there for eight or 10 hours. They park in the morning at 10 o'clock. They don't leave until, you know, 7:00 or 8:00. And I've talked to some of them, and that's what they're telling me. They say they can't find parking, so that's, they're coming down to Gravel Street. So I, I really feel strongly that we deserve to have some action taken on this and have some kind of signage, even if it's short, just to say short-term parking, four hours, two hours, whatever, resident parking. I mean, something to be able to let people know that this isn't a long-term parking lot, and it's what's turned, turned out to be, and it's just getting worse. And I think it exacerbated with the whole short-term rental issue too, because again, where are people parking? They're parking on the street if they can't park within the, on the residence that they're actually renting. So my, my, my ask for the council is to really take some steps about the signage. My, I had heard last year when they did the survey, the town had that survey completed, that they're going to take all the feedback and they're going to do something. I've heard nothing that's happened from that survey. And that was, I was told that was going to happen two years before I was complaining about the parking situation. So now we're four years into it. Nothing has changed. It's just gotten worse. I'm getting annoyed because, again, I'm just, I don't want to see the same car out there for 10 hours a day. You know, it's just, that's not, it's not long-term parking. It's residential, and people should be coming and going and not treating it like a parking lot. So, and even if we just did this through the summer, just to alleviate the summer, you know, crowd, something, put something in place, see how it works. The only thing is, it means it's going to have to be monitored by the police. They're not going to, you know, we can't have people just ignoring the signs, but I think if we do put signs up, that people will respect them. I don't know. That's what I like to think. They'll say, okay, I have a couple hours to be able to park here, and then I got to do something different. So I'm not, you know, it at least would give me an opportunity to go out and say, it is short-term parking. You really shouldn't be parking for 10 hours. It gives me some backup, because I've done that, and the guys, one of the guys told me, well, there's no signs, so I'll park as long as I want. So that is what you hear from people. The other topic I wanted to discuss was the short-term rentals. So I am, I don't want to live next to a short-term rental. A lot of my neighbors do, and it's horrific what they're going through. I'm not opposed to short-term rentals if they're owner-occupied, but they have to be inequitably owner-occupied where it's not, there's no loopholes, that the owner can't get out of it, you know, saying, I'm really there and they're not. I mean, it has to be owner-occupied and... I mean, it has to be owner-occupied, and they have to be regulated to make sure they're following the rules of the town for how we should handle STRs. And I know that the owner-occupied STRs now are, have formed their own group, and they wanna be regulated. They told me, they said, you know, we're happy to do whatever we have to do to make this work. You know, so I know there's some people that wanna do an outright ban, because it's really in the, I guess in the town statutes or whatever, that we shouldn't be having these in residential areas. I'd like to see if we can find a middle ground. I know it's gonna probably be more work than just saying, nope, follow the statutes, we don't have them in our, you know, residential zones. But I really feel that, you know, we could find a, I think we could, we could, we need to work together now, we need to do something immediately, because we're already behind the eight ball. I think if we had addressed this two and a half years, and I mean, it's just, and people talk about having, you know, not grandfathering people in, we can't do that either. It's like every day that we wait and deliberate on this, there's more people buying up property in Mystic. And I think we've all heard the stories about a house going on the market for eight hundred thousand dollars, and it sells for one point two because somebody's buying it as an STR. It's just greed, it's pure greed, and it's ruining our town, it's ruining our communities, it really is. And I've been in Gravel Street for, going on twenty years now, and it's just, I don't even wanna live here anymore. I mean, it's getting that bad. So, and I don't wanna see that happen to our town. So I hope you can take action in one way or another. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have a Melanie Barba, is it? Barba.
Melanie Barba, I'm at 23 Gravel Street. I'm a neighbor of the previous speaker. I almost, it's difficult for me to come up here right now after listening to some of the testimony from others in the room, what they're dealing with. I just wanna say that puts some of our other issues into perspective, I guess. However, I do wanna share that I was just with someone a couple days ago who was visiting here from Arkansas, and she was telling me that she used to, on a regular basis, vacation in the Panhandle in Florida, Destin, I guess, and up around that whole area. And I've seen pictures of it, I've never been to that particular vacation spot, but it, where, is where the family went every year, and she said, they no longer can go there because of what has transpired as a result of all the short-term rentals. So houses that used to accommodate a family of three, four, five people, now, on the weekends especially, are just overrun with these groups that are coming in and renting for short periods of time. She said the entire complexion of the area, which was lovely and popular, is no more. It's been totally changed. And as she was visiting Mystic for the last week, she said, I wanna warn you guys, that's the direction you're going in here. You will no longer have this quintessential New England town, and I know we have to share what we have, but as Renee said, I think it's all about greed, and I'm fairly new to the town, and my understanding is that short-term rentals are not legal in residential neighborhoods, and yet, they're all over the place. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Rick DiSarami, and after that will be John Goodrich.
Good evening. I'm here to express my concern on the closing of the basements of Branford Manor. My name is Richard DiSarami, I live at 174 Branford Avenue.
Thank you.
I've been there nineteen years, and one of the reasons why I got that apartment was because I needed a basement. And now, after they finally fixed it, after fifteen years of complaints, they're taking it away from us. I don't know where to put the stuff. It's too good to be thrown out, and I did have a leak in the basement for like fifteen years, and they had fixed it once, and it lasted for a couple of months, and then they had to redig up the ground and do it over because they did a lousy job. And the mold, my next-door neighbor had mold, and they had to remove the sheetrock, and they never replaced it, and she told me about it. But my main concern was the closing of the basements. I mean, I've been there fifteen years, I don't know if I'm grandfathered in there where they can't close it on me. I have to use the basement in the winter for my heat. My thermostat doesn't work, I gotta go down there and turn the knob on the pipes. They put the insulation in upside down, and while we were doing it, I mentioned it to the workers. I've done insulation myself in the past, and it was all upside down. All the fiberglass, you can see the fiberglass coming down, and so what I wound up having to do was put clear plastic through the whole ceiling of the basement to keep the fiberglass from circulating through the house. I told them about it, the office, and nothing ever came of it. They did some inspection last week, and I got home from the doctor's office, and I noticed my front door was unlocked, lights were on, and there was no notice on my door telling me that they were there, because I always asked them to put a notice on my door at what time and what date that you were in my apartment. Now, my basement is the main apartment for the whole building, because the building is shaped like an L. All the hot water, cold water, and the heat goes through my basement, and it spreads out to all the other apartments. And if anybody in that apartment building has a leak or anything, they have to come into my basement, because my basement has all the on and off switches, and they're gonna close it on me. But I'm, they're allowed to come in my apartment twenty-four seven, anytime they want, and I don't think that's right. And that's basically all I have to say about that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John Goodrich is next, followed by Donna Mederos.
Mayor Melendez, members of the council, good evening. I'm here to talk about Park Place, which I know is coming up on your agenda on the twenty-eighth, which Mayor Melendez, I understand you got that moved up, so thank you, it's appreciated. What I wanna discuss is Park Place has got public access to the river. My opinion, our community is defined by being a coastal town, and that access is the right of every resident of this town, regardless of where you live. The problem, also, Alice Foley, who's sort of the champion of Park Place, my grandfather used to drive her to work when she was sixteen, if you know her age, you guys can do the math. So, family friends, I care about what she cares about as well. Point is, we have public access there, which is being restricted by the homeowners on the street. Again, as Alice has told everybody, the river is state-owned, it belongs to every one of us and every resident of this town, she'll say, a resident of the state, and to see a few homeowners that have spent a lot of money to buy some property intentionally restrict that access by moving into the town right away is just something that I don't think should happen. I know Councilor Westervelt's been out there multiple times to look, I know Councilor Bordelon has been out there multiple times to look. Alice is very impressive at you've done, Mayor Melendez, again, thank you. So I was gonna show up tonight with some maps for everybody to see, but I don't think that really does it justice. So I have a request. On Sunday, the twenty-sixth, it's gonna be a couple days for you guys to vote, if you guys come out at ten o'clock, meet with Alice and myself, look at it, pace it off. If I may say, I think even Mr. Burt's been out there to look at it, I think you have as well.
Many times.
Many times. It's just really important that we open that street up and allow every resident to be able to get there and enjoy the river, which belongs to all of us. So, that's why I'm here to make that request. If you guys do it, I'd appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Donna Mederos is next, followed by Kristen Distanti.
Hi, Donna Mederos, 339 Indigo Street. I've lived in Hillcrest for thirty-three years now, and my concern with the STRs in residential areas is their impact on our peace and security in our neighborhoods. Recently, a neighbor of ours have turned their home into an STR. This past Saturday, we were awoken, actually jolted out of our sleep from an explosion. This happened three times, the entire backyard lit up. These weren't firecrackers, they weren't M-80s, this was heavy-duty explosions. Once the cops arrived, because they were driving around the area trying to figure out where it was coming from, it was across the street from our house, so I knew exactly where to tell them to go. They waited, well, they came in, four cop, four police officers, four cars, knocking, shining flashlights in the windows, nobody would answer the door, nobody opened the door to them. Forty minutes later, they left, and the gentlemen in the house are walking around with their cell phone flashlights on, and they left the next morning at nine-thirty in the morning. So the house is listed on Airbnb to hold six people, but yet there were five carloads of men in the home, having a good time, and we're all woken up at one AM. My neighbor across the street, who lives next to this house, said a month ago, the same thing happened with disorderly conduct with these men, drinking really loud, being obnoxious, the wives were trying to quiet them down. I mean, there's children living on the other side of this home. I mean, I personally feel they should be banned from residential areas, but until Groton comes to a decision on this, a long-term decision, I mean, you're gonna have to come up with, to find these people, find the homeowners. If cops have to be called in constantly like this, something has to be done. I mean, we shouldn't have to live like this. That's all I have to say on it. Thank you.
Kristen Distanti, followed by Ramonita Ramos.
Hi, Kristen Distanti, eighty-two Irving Street in Mystic, and I feel some bad energy coming at me. I'm a retired schoolteacher. Our dream was to move to Mystic, and we bought a house with an attached apartment, and because of the taxes here are high, we said, okay, we'll short-term rent this little apartment, and that'll help us pay our taxes and enable us to live here in Mystic. And so we've done that, and it's been very, very good, and the reason we can't rent it long-term is our family is flung far and wide. My daughter lives in Minneapolis, the other one lives in Paris, France. My brother is in Chicago, my dad's in Wisconsin, my best friend's in California, other relatives are in DC, Chicago. My people are far away. When my people come, my people come not for lunch, not for dinner, my people come and my people stay, a week, maybe two weeks. And my house, even with the apartment, is not big enough for everybody, so my practice has been, my neighbor has an Airbnb, so I would always just rent her Airbnb, so there's enough room for everybody. So, we have an Airbnb, and I just wanna tell you, like, and I've never heard something as horrible as that woman, that's terrible. And Airbnb does have policies where people are banned from ever renting from Airbnb if they're notified that there's been a problem like that. They shouldn't ever be allowed to rent again. I wanna let you know who I am, how I run my place, and who my people are that come in to stay. I have a lot of coasties who have a weekend leave, and they wanna spend a little time together and like have a little nest. A lot of Navy personnel coming and going. I have a lot of parents coming in for graduations. Maybe some of you saw the headline in the day of Trevor Morris, who was featured as an encryption expert, graduated from Coast Guard. His mom, his sister, and his aunt stayed at my house to celebrate his graduation. A lot of young couples coming up for weddings, scouting a location or being in weddings or attending weddings, people who are moving to or from the area, they need a little more time, they need a week maybe to adjust. I have a lady who was closing up an office, she was unpacking. I had a mom who's a college kid, was having health difficulties, I think maybe of an emotional nature. The daughter needed emotional support, so mom stayed for three weeks to home-cook and support her daughter. I just had two moms and three teenagers who were playing volleyball up at Mohegan Sun. They needed a place where they could all stay and be together. I had a writer who was looking for a very quiet place to finish his book. Couples celebrating anniversaries and birthdays. I just had a beautiful young family in from New York City, the little boy had never kind of ran in grass and never played with a sprinkler before. A lot of young people who wanna come here, they hear the buzz, the hype, and they can't afford the hotel prices. My prices are less than a third of any hotel, and the services I give are ten times what anybody could get in a hotel. A lot of people just prefer the home, comfy, friendly environment. Many, many people are people who are coming here, they grew up here, they're coming to town for, you know, a family event, a reunion, a vacation, a funeral. I just had a grandma, she lived in a condo, her children and her grandchildren came up for Easter, so there was five people. And then I have a businessman who comes every week, he actually owns a really good business here in Groton, he lives in Massachusetts and is too far to go back and forth every single day, so he stays with me two nights every week. Okay, so Airbnb collects and pays a lot of taxes to the state of Connecticut, I pay in taxes on the revenue, I'm providing a very nice service, completely quiet, lovely guests, never had any kind of problem whatsoever, and I'm always looking, I'm always watching. I recommend people downtown, I just did a little math today, my apartment alone, I believe I have sent about twenty-nine thousand dollars of just dinners in Mystic. That's not counting any revenue that I make. And the fact that, you know, that all these people are going down, at least two meals a day downtown, and think of all the waitstaff, think of all the people, all the business owners that are successful because of that. And plus, I can actually afford to go out to dinner too, because I have a place. So the, some, you'll hear some from other people soon, but we did a rough calculation that the Airbnbs locally are contributing about twenty-six million dollars in downtown businesses. That is five data centers. We haven't cut down a single tree, so think about that. Okay, so even with the apartment, we still didn't have enough room. My mother-in-law's eighty-nine, she might have to move up here in a couple years, so a house came up on the market, three doors down from me. She and I agreed to chip in together and buy it, so that she can move up here in a couple of years. In the meantime, I still have this family that keeps coming, so I can't rent it long-term, because again, my family needs a place to stay when they come. And this house was a wreck, it was a long-term rental from somebody who, absentee landlord from Maine, it was rented to college kids. It was rundown, moldy, the landscape was overgrown, it was neglected, there was plants growing out of gutters. We've painted, we've replaced doors and windows, we've landscaped, we cleaned up the inside, we took out all the insulation, cleaned up the mold. So what am I supposed to do with my family if this place is taken away? So I'm not, you know, Conrad Hilton, I'm not Marriott, I'm a local person with a local business in my home. Lots of people, shipbuilders, accountants, lawyers, artists, tutors, musicians, tech workers, engineers, lots of people have small businesses in their home. I care a lot about this town, I do everything in my power to keep it nice, make it nice. You know, I care. I'm not the nightmare that everybody's hearing about. So I want you to really think about what cutting off in excess of twenty-six million dollars a year will do to our white-hot tourist economy right now in Mystic. Think about, thank you, and thank you guys all for the incredible amount of time and energy you put into this for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next I have Ramonita Ramos, followed by Felicita Ramos.
Hello, I'm Ramonita Ramos, I live in forty-four Branford Avenue, and I'm here today knowing that after being here, risking maybe getting a notice to quit, as we have met with Councilor Bordelon and Andre. We, I'm gonna say seven out of the ten apartments in my apartment area have received a notice to quit, just from meeting with the mayor and some of the people here. I do also have a basement, and my mother passed away in twenty-nineteen, and I have all of her belongings in my basement, and the notice that we received was to get rid of all the trash in our basement, and that if it was not removed by a certain day, that they will have someone come in and remove it and throw it in the garbage, and it would be at our expense. I have... I have, I am one of those people that pay more than a thousand dollars to live there. I am a single mother as well, I've been there for nine years now. Um, my apartment is also falling, like it's a wreck. I have, uh, in a water bubble in my dining room, uh, this is the second one I've had, they've had to open it up, they've had to patch it up, they have not painted it, that was five years ago, now I have a new one next to it. Um, with the renovations that they did, my bathroom sink is unattached from the wall. Um, my, my kitchen sink, the plumbing is off, my hot water's cold, my cold water's hot, so my dishwasher doesn't work. I've talked to them plenty of times, they haven't fixed it. Um, I recently had an annual inspection done on the nineteenth of May, and because I've met with these people here, um, I actually received another notice that I'm gonna receive another annual inspection, uh, within a week. And I asked them why if they had already had been in my apartment. They said this one is for the basement now, which I didn't understand because I didn't have that mold problem that I'm aware of, but they had access to my apartment that whole entire day and they didn't check the basement. So, I asked to be present for the second inspection, um, which apparently someone has already been in my apartment without my knowledge. Um, the other issue that I had is my neighbor has mold, and my son did have two episodes in my home where his tongue swelled up. And so now I have an EpiPen, we're not exactly sure what he's allergic to, we've been to the allergist, we've been to autoimmune specialist, um, he still has swelling in his body. He is ten. Um, so, we have that issue, and I know that they're gonna have retaliation, as my brother used to be maintenance, and he has an active lawsuit with them. Um, my sister is gonna be speaking next, and they have, they have it out for us. They, they really, really have it out for us. And I hope that someone does something for it, um, because we are tired of the manipulation, we're tired of being harassed. Um, they actually came to my job about a year ago. Uh, Rachel from the office actually went to my workplace in New London to have me sign a paper, um, and she sat there, and after I signed it, she backdated it three years prior, because my chart was gonna be audited. So, the fact that she came to my workplace to do that is crazy. They just redid, I just recertified my lease, and they use my 401K as income, is an asset. Um, I went from, I make less than forty-three thousand dollars a year to apparently making fifty-three thousand dollars a year. I don't know where that money's coming from, but there's nothing I can do. They told me that if I didn't sign my lease, that I would pay sixteen hundred dollars for my apartment. And so, I really, I have nothing really to do. So, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Felicita Ramos, followed by Craig Bush.
Hello, I'm Felicita Ramos, I live at one-seventy-eight Branford Avenue, and I'm here to speak on the, on professionalism from the office at Branford Manor, and that they're unorganized as well. Um, as you said, they do backdate a lot of things to cover their, themselves. Um, they do backdate a lot of the notices, which doesn't give us enough time to do what needs to be done in the apartment for them to come in and do inspections. Um, I also wanna speak on the basement closing, because I have three kids, they all have bikes, and where am I gonna put that? In my living room, in my kitchen, you know what I mean? Um, I also do have a leak in the basement, which they fixed, but they never cleaned it up, so a lot of mold has been growing in there. I had to get rid of a lot of my belongings because they had mold on them, um, and a lot of those belongings were also my mother, who passed away, had to part with all of that stuff. Um, I also wanna speak on, basically is losing storage space, 'cause the closets are small, I have nowhere to put anything. Um, they also, uh, just sent me a notice to quit because I supposedly owe rent from twenty-eighteen, and we're in twenty-twenty-two now. Never got a notice stating that I had that balance. If I did, I would've paid it. Um, also, would like to speak on, um, someone spoke on the parks. They received a lot of funding, so those parks should be fixed for the children. Children have nowhere to play. They're always running around in the streets and everything, they could get hit by a car 'cause a lot of people drive really quickly through there. Um, my apartment has a lot of issues, uh, right now had a leak in my, um, from my bathroom sink down to my kitchen, so I have a really big hole in my kitchen, and it hasn't been fixed, it's going on two weeks now. Um, closets are all messed up, the closet doors are messed up, I've notified them, they never came. Now, all of a sudden, because we've been starting all these meetings, is when they wanna say, oh, we wanna fix this, let us come in, let us fix this, and it's, it's kinda frustrating. They also speak down to us, they don't treat us with, with respect. Um, I've gone in there and I have, uh, spoken to them about prior jobs I've had, so, you know, so they could add it to my income and stuff, and one of them had spoke to me and said she wasn't gonna add it on, and because it wasn't writing, now I owe back rent for that too. I was also receiving child support from my daughter's father, um, which I would stop receiving for a little while, and I didn't notify them, I still kept paying my rent, and because he started paying in large lump sums, now I owe back rent for that too. Um, I'm just, I'm sick and tired of everybody getting all these notices to quit, especially since we started the whole meetings and stuff. And it, it, it puts fear in us because we don't know if we're gonna get kicked out, where are we gonna go with our kids, like, it's, it's frustrating. So, I really, really hope that someone can do something with the office. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Craig Bush, followed by Jim Furlong.
Hi, Craig Bush, fifty-four Pearl Street in Mystic. My wife and I have lived there for twenty-five years, and we're full-time residents. I agree with Mel, with Melanie that our concerns here regarding short-term rentals are nothing compared to our fellow citizens and the problems they describe tonight. But, I came to speak to you, so I will. In recent years, the house, uh, next to us at fifty-two Pearl Street has been operated as a short-term rental. The owner, Mr. Young, uh, lives in Boston. We would prefer to have a neighbor, uh, to his transient tenants, but we coexist with the short-term rental. When planning and zoning began to wrestle with the neighborhood complaints, we decided to speak up about short-term rentals. We wrote a letter to Planning and Zoning with our concerns. We were chosen to speak with the Horsey-Witten Group, and, uh, and we did so. In summary, I wrote a letter to you all, uh, describing that experience with them and the recommendations that we made. After that, uh, honestly, Amy and I said, that's, we've done it all, that's all we can do. You guys take it from here. We've, we've told you our feelings. Well, seven fifteen AM, Sunday morning, we're at breakfast, and four construction trucks from Boston laden with earth movers, gravel, and hot tar come down Pearl Street. They park in front of our house, and I said to Amy, Steve, who owns fifty-two, is gonna get his parking lot for his hotel, and there's nothing we can do about it. It's Sunday morning at seven fifteen. We can call the police, and they will say, I'm sorry, that's not our purview. We can call Town Hall, and we know they don't work on Sunday. We understand that. So did Mr. Young, who decided to bring a construction crew from Boston to Mystic to pave his parking lot. His driveway was eleven feet wide when he started. That is the limit for driveways in the town. We cleared the area next to his house eighteen feet wide and sixty feet wide. To accommodate renters of his house. It's a three-bedroom house, limits it to eight renters, but we all know on Friday and Saturday, who else? So, the, uh, I'm running out. Uh, I gotta cut. Fuck, there we go. And you guys. I'm trying to be brief here, guys. Okay. So, I, uh, I said to Amy, we're gonna have a parking lot next door, there's nothing we can do. And, um, the neighborhood was up in arms, people were yelling at contractors, people, Mr. Young showed up from Boston, not to speak to the owners, but to make sure that his job got done. He and the contractors had been there for forty-five minutes, they were done. They all left town, they all went back to Boston, the four trucks, Mr. Young, up I-95, and they're gone. What could we do? Well, I called Peter Singh-Villis on Monday morning, and I said, Peter, this is what happened. He says, oh my gosh. So, he issued a stop-work order, of course, the work had been completed, um, but nonetheless, he explained to Mr. Young that he would have to go through the process of Planning and Zoning and the Historic District Commission in order to get permission to do what he had just done. And if he didn't get that permission, he would have to tear his parking lot up and put the driveway back. So, my message is, this is a neighborhood, it's a short-term rental issue, it's a person-to-person issue, it's a, Steve is no longer my neighbor. He was my neighbor and my best friend for ten years. He and his family moved away, turned their house into a short-term rental. His kids used to use the swing in my backyard, his lab used to frolic with my Labrador, and, and now, and run into the river, uh, and now we don't speak. And so, this is what happens when you start putting businesses in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And so, here I am again, I think we've played, I've told you everything we have to say, and it's up to you guys now.
Thank you.
Is that not working? Oh, that's working. Oh.
Jim Furlong, followed by Mary Ellen Furlong.
Uh, my name is Jim Furlong.
Your speaker's, your speaker is interfering.
High-pitched squeak.
Turn it off.
Take that off.
Okay.
There you go.
I'll, I'll turn it off.
It's okay, it's okay.
Okay. My name is Jim Furlong, I live at fifty-seven Fishtown Lane in Groton. Next Tuesday, June fourteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a hearing on whether to begin a one-year moratorium on accepting applying, applications for data centers in Groton. That's, that's a big, big date. I believe it's one, one week from today. As you probably know, Groton has been a target for two sets of data, data center salesmen for at least a year. The term data sales, uh, data center, as you probably know too, describes off-site housing for computers that are operated from elsewhere. The salespeople have been, uh, held at bay, both by the Town Council, congratulations, and by their own legal problems. They promise big money and small impacts to the town. They don't like to take questions, although they do like to lecture people. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission has wisely decided that a moratorium on data centers is in order. During the year, data centers, uh, will be studied closely and expertly for such matters as, um, noise, pollution, electricity and water use, sprawl, a major point, and quality of life for the people who live here. Applications to build won't be accepted during the, uh, during the moratorium. Data centers are the reality side of what we blithely known as, know as the, the cloud. The centers can consume enormous acreages. Last year, the data center salesmen were seeking a total of three-hundred-and-eighty acres of forested land combined, eighty acres north and south of I-95. In Northern Virginia, which is a big center for data, data centers, authorities have been fighting against a data center bid for more than two-thousand acres in addition to, uh, vast lands that they already own. So, please support, uh, our wise and steadfast Planning and Zoning Commission. As of today, the hearing is scheduled for the Town Hall Annex, uh, two, at, uh, at seven PM Tuesday, June fourteenth. It's labeled as hybrid virtual. It would be wise to check it, uh, close to the, close to the date to make sure there are no changes. But it's, it's a big date, it means a lot to the future of Groton. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ellen Furlong, followed by Bruce McDermott.
My name is Mary Ellen Furlong, and I also live at fifty-seven Fishtown Lane in Groton. I have two points tonight. Uh, one, the first one is I'd like to ask that the Town Council request the resumption of the monthly meeting of the heads of the land use commissions and the mayor and, uh, the town manager as well. During my ten years as an alternate on inland wetlands, this was standard practice. Uh, and the heads of, I, I was on wetlands, and David Scott would go and he'd tell us what he learned, and then we, we would all have a better idea of what was coming. Uh, this, we didn't have the unpleasant surprises that I see happening now because of this. Uh, and it really helped transparency. The meetings were relatively short, half of them were only, I think, about an hour long, and it, it really helps with transparency. I can't imagine why these meetings were eliminated. Not, not a huge expense for the town. The other thing that I wish to address is what I heard here tonight and had heard of previously. I cannot comprehend why the owners of the Branford Manor would be granted an exemption from taxes for a number of years. Apparently, we don't know who owns Branford Manor. I, I do not understand how the town can grant exemptions for people that, uh, they don't even know who they are. And I realize that probably none of you were there, I think it was nineteen-seventeen that this happened. Uh, twenty-seventeen, yes, I'm dating myself. I know you weren't there in nineteen-seventeen, but, um, probably none of you knew anything about this. That's not the point. The point is, the town does, and the town is still here.
Thank you. Bruce McDermott, followed by Christine Santos.
Uh, Bruce McDermott, three-two-eight Noank Road, Mystic. Uh, I hope you all had a chance to look at the new signage down there on one-seventeen and one, and the great job the beautification committee did, putting all those plantings Well, I'm gonna address short-term rentals. I'm sorry. The tourist season in Mystic is upon us, and though it's hard to tell when it begins and ends anymore... and ends anymore. The attraction of our area has wrought its magic on our once quaint, peaceful place. We are now inundated by short-term rentals. Short-term rentals bleed off existing homes available for purchase by a potential resident. They increase our property taxes by artificially raising values for everyone. This is an ad from this week's day for the house next to me. Beautiful custom-built home, perfect for your primary residence, vacation home, or as an income-producing rental Airbnb. The property is currently listed on Airbnb and VRBO sites. It's listed for just under two million dollars. I talked to the owner when he put it on sale last year, and he put it up for seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. It ended up selling at the behest of a local agent for one-point-two million, and now it's up for one, one-point-nine-eight million. That's what happens. Investors will pay much more for a house they can rent out as an STR and immediately recoup their investment and then some. Nor should we regulate them, since they are hostile to the very existence of neighborhoods. Wouldn't you rather choose to live next to a neighbor who's a permanent resident, where you have some commonality, because they're part of the community? You cannot have that community with STR residents coming and going. It makes no difference whether they behave, create noise, or display bad manners. They still have no stake in our neighborhoods. STR invent, investors are often out-of-area LLCs. They state they want to provide a welcoming place for tourists so they can share our lovely Mystic with them. Only the most naive would be taken in by that absurdity. It is about money. I am often told by STR owners how lucrative it is and to take advantage of our unenforced regulations. Incredibly, the zoning rules were rewritten about twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, yet nobody involved had the prescience to deal with STRs. Horsley Witten, the consultant that you're involved with right now, was a consultant hired back then to help rewrite the regulations. They suggested stringent limits on Airbnb STRs. This is the wording that they suggested. Commentary, this is from November first, twenty-seventeen. The last time we discussed this, it seemed the town preferred not to add standards for temporary rentals, e.g., Airbnb. If that is still the case, the definition below can be deleted. The definition below is temporary rental, a private dwelling or a room in a dwelling which is available for short-term temporary rentals of less than thirty days per party per stay. The dwelling must be primary home of the owner for at least six months out of any calendar year. So, the town chose not to go along with the recommendations paid for. Why? It is still hard to tell if this decision was willful ignorance or simply outright, outright favoritism towards imagined economic development. Now the same consultant is again involved. The same problems exist and are worse. It is the, the decision-makers that are the problem here. Are Groton's professionals really conversant with what is going on in other communities, let alone here? P&amp;Z staff is intransient and has not taken any initiative since twenty-seventeen, as STRs have proliferated beyond reason. That would be an admission that they have erred. It's easier to do nothing. But even though STRs are not specifically mentioned, our regs should apply with the wording that now exists. If it was applied, of course. I'm on the zoning board of appeals. I read those regulations very well. What I would think is black, somebody else thinks is white, is just unaccountable. Our regs say hotels are not permitted in residential zones. STRs are obviously, obviously hotels and certainly not residences, as P&amp;Z staff would have you believe. To say otherwise is to turn the regulation on its head and goes well beyond its intent. Unfortunately, it has now fallen on the aggrieved to push the town into action. Since the updated regs have taken into effect in all this time, no written opinion has been rendered by P&amp;Z staff or the zoning enforcement officer on STRs. Nothing. A clear sign that they do not want to commit their actions to scrutiny. In twenty-twenty-one, you were all here, an ordinance was written by John Reiner, the head of the department, who lives in Rhode Island, and the town attorney, Mr. Cody, both well away from the antics of STRs. It essentially blessed STRs to the detriment of those of us who have to put up with their use. Neither was there any truly effective enforcement mechanism, a must with any ordinance that you guys are gonna consider.
Thank you. Your time has expired, and if you have comments, you can submit them to the clerk, and she'll put them on record.
Okay. Do I have another minute?
Uh, no, it, it went over. I'm sorry.
Gee, I timed it, and I was okay. All right. Very good. But as Pogo said, we have met the enemy, and they are us. Please do the right thing and take back our power.
Thank you. Christine Santos, followed by Christina Tejeda.
Hi, good evening. My name's Christine Santos. I live at two-sixty-eight Branford Avenue. I'm here this evening, as many other of my neighbors, to discuss the issues that have been going on and continue to happen at Branford Manor. Not only are there been mold issues, but also negligence in repairs in the apartments. I've been living in Branford almost fourteen years. I have had issues with water damage in my apartment. When they did the renovations in Branford back in twenty-seventeen, they did bathroom renovations. The tub, they didn't give us a new tub. It had mold on it. They did not treat that. They did a bath fitting that does not fit. Water, when they went to Cox the bath fitting, they did not do it correctly. So I've had them come out to my apartment at least eight or ten times for them to redo it. The water gets in between that space and has fallen down to the ceiling in my dining room and has caused a lot of serious damage. It got to a point where it was about a year that I was complaining that the floor was starting to sag. I have three children, two of them that are very small children, and I told them, I said that if this doesn't get fixed, there's a possibility that the tub could fall through the floor. It was starting to part from the tub. I had to go as far as to threaten to sue them for them to be able to fix that, and they only half-fixed it. They only took a little part of the floor that it took them, about a week for them to fix, and they never came back to finish up the job. Not only that, I have cracked stairs. The top stair started to sag, sag where it's about to snap in half. I've been, two years that I've been complaining about that. I recently just had an inspection done on the sixth. I mentioned it again, and they did not mark it on their checklist. So I'm assuming that that's not gonna get fixed. And I'm afraid, because I have about thirteen stairs. I have a three-year-old, and I have a one-year-old. What if that stair breaks and they hurt themselves? I also have a child who has special needs. He was diagnosed with autism before he was two, and I have put in safety measures in my apartment that I was told that I had to remove. I put a chain on the front door and back door. Since my son is a flight risk when he has meltdowns, the first thing for him to do is to open the door and get out. I was told that I had to be removed. I was not given a proper reason why it had to be removed. I told him I filled out a 504 for reasonable accommodations, because I have a special-needs child. And the community manager, who's Donna Brown, gave me every other kind of excuse why I couldn't, but it was not legitimate reasons why I couldn't. I also, I don't know if many of you know, but a couple of years ago in Branford, there was someone who had committed a murder in Rhode Island, who ended up in Branford and somehow got into the attic and fell through the ceiling. And since then, I've been terrified. Branford cannot assure my safety. They put these video cameras in Branford, saying that it's there for us, but it's not. It's there for them to harass us, for them to see what we have on our porches, who we have coming in our homes. They have never once been there for our safety. I did have a couple of times where things were stolen right off my front porch, and I reached out to them, and those cameras don't even face my apartment building. So how are they there for them to be able to protect me? My, since then, I have put locks on my bedroom doors that it requires a key, so at nighttime that I feel safe with my children in case someone was to break into my apartment. I was told that I had to remove them recently with this inspection, saying that it was a fire hazard, which I today contacted the City of Groton Fire Department and spoke to the chief, who told me that is not a fire code. Then after, when I called their bluff, they told me that it was a HUD rule, which I called their bluff again, and it wasn't. It was just, if you can, then go ahead and put a lock, but I need to have a copy of the key, that defeats the purpose. Then anyone from the office or from maintenance has access to my bedrooms. What's the reason for them to be there? If there's something that needs to be done for maintenance, I've told them that they cannot come into my apartment unless I'm there, because unfortunately, I'm sorry, but they, there's been bad experiences in the past where they just hired anyone for maintenance, and people have come in and stolen belongings. And those are my personal belongings. That's my home. I should be able to feel safe in there. There has been intimidation from the offices. They do not allow us, for us to have any outdoor playthings for our kids. So I'm one of the tenants that has a basement, and now they're saying that they're gonna take it away from us. Their reasoning was because people have too much items in their basement, and they have, are using it as a living space. My basement has never been. They're supposed to be required annually to do an inspection, and they haven't done that. They're just doing that now because we have decided for us to speak up and say something. And that's sad, that it's taken to this point for us to get the media involved, to get the mayor involved, for them to do something, and for them to start fixing things that people have been complaining for years on end. My neighbor, her apartment is one of the corner apartments that has the main water lines in there. The water pipe, the hot water pipe burst, that was back in September of last year. It still hasn't been completely fixed. What's the reason? I mean, these are things that are a concern. She had mold. She lost everything in her apartment, in her basement. I have three kids, like I mentioned, and I've been living there for fourteen years. So there's stuff, there are outdoor things that I can't put outdoors, is there. My seasonal things are there. So, yep. There's so many things that I could go on, but yes, I'm hoping for change.
Thank you. Christina Tejeda, followed by Ian Thomas.
Hi, my name is Christina Tejeda. I live in one-ninety-four Branford Avenue. I'm also a Branford Manor resident. I've been living there a little over four years. When I initially moved in, management told me they gave me a basement, because I have three boys. They have bikes, they have hoverboards. I have seasonal things. I decorate in front of my house every season. I have clothing that I keep down there in the basement. But the mold is a concern. The mold needs to be cleaned, not the basins being shut down. Shutting down a basement doesn't do anything. The mold is still there. There's times I smell mold in my dining room, like if I keep the basement door open. I've never had a leak, but I do have a leak that constantly happens from my bathroom down to my dining room. It's seeped through the walls. My walls were so soft that you can literally put your handprint into the wall. They fixed it, left the patch there, didn't paint it. I just had a banister a couple of months, March, fall off completely, because it was installed into the sheetrock and not the studs. They left me with a hole about nine inches wide for three months before they just recently patched it. They have not painted it. Anything that you call them for is just an excuse. They set up appointments to do maintenance work, they never show up. If you try to schedule an appointment with them and they, they're not available, they threaten you, that, you know, you have to give them access. With all the things that's been going on with the mold in the basement, I reached out to Deirdre, who is supposed to be a representative for HUD for us. I also reached out to someone that she forwarded me to, which is Keith Roden, and he literally told me to pack my stuff, throw it out, or look for counsel. And I live in Branford Manor. I live in a low-income area. There's no way I can even afford counsel to even help me with this matter. I think everyone that is here today and other people, we reach out to people, and we're just ignored. It's to the point where we just feel like we're being bullied. It's either you live there in these circumstances, or go find somewhere else to live. That's what we're being sold into office. And it sucks also that, and I'm pretty sure a lot of the other people that are here, when we see a notice at the door, that we have to be like, our anxiety is like on a thousand, because we're thinking we're getting an eviction notice, just because we're complaining about things that need to be fixed. They only want to fix when they have annuals. And now we have HUD coming to do an inspection at the end of this month, and they literally want to go in our apartments without our permission and just do whatever they need to do, just so they can pass this inspection, when this is something they had three-hundred-and-sixty-five days to get to, and they waited to the month of. It's not fair. And with the basement situation, it's to the point where if they close the basement, they're gonna gut out all the apartments in the basement, and literally someone can walk through all of our units if they wanted to. There's, our safety is on the line. Our kids' health is on the line. It's just numerous things that's been going on, and it's just been ignored. And I just want it, I guess, some understanding and some resolution to this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Thomas, followed by Latasha Baraj.
Good evening. Ian Thomas, twenty-four Jefferson Drive. Just real quick, the, I just wanna echo the sentiments of Bunny Furlong there. Committee of the Chairs, sounds like a really good idea that should come back, you know, as far as like having all the bodies for land use and various other things talk to each other preemptively. Also, an appeal to the mayor. A lot of people come out to speak tonight, every month now, it's been years, every month there's always a logjam of public comment. So please, use your authority to add public comment to multiple meetings per month. You can do this. You don't need a vote. You can do this. So, at least two times a month would be reasonable, I would think. It would help kind of speed things along, you know, because people would be able to come out more frequently and speak to the issues, not have to hold it for a month and then come and speak all at once. So, primarily, I want to speak about the Branford Manor situation. You know, since they've come out in public and raised awareness of this, I, it's come to my attention that there is this agreement, a tax abatement agreement between the town that's a joint with the city and the town, signed on with Branford Manor Rent, what is it? Branford Manor Preservation Limited Partners. Who are they? And, and, and can we get them on the phone? And can, you use what leverage is in this deal? There's, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxes being abated for years. So they're not paying, they're, so they're making money. For what they don't pay, that's money in their pocket. And there's a whole list of agreements in this, in this document, that were supposed to be investments and renovations to the properties over there. And on top of there are supposed to be reports and reviews of what's going on. So this kind of brings me to, to a larger point of like, how are these agreements being enforced, regulated, and, you know, checked in on? Where's the accountability? Because I feel like a lot of these issues probably would've been caught earlier had there been some regular accountability to this agreement. So, that makes me wonder about continuity. I'm wondering, for all the councillors up here, when you take your seats, do you receive a binder of like ongoing agreements currently active with the town? Does the town manager, the town manager just took his job in two thousand seventeen, I believe? Did you receive a binder? What was the, the transfer of information from, from the previous town manager? Mark Goldfinger? Did he provide you any? Nothing? Nothing? That's horrifying. Coming from a professional maritime background, every time you change a watch, every time you turn over the con of a ship, there is a transfer of information. There's a logbook. There's an exchange of, of information between the current watchstander and the oncoming watchstander, so that continuity of, of performance can, can carry on. So, you know, whoever's coming on watch has been asleep for eight hours, right? So they don't know what's going on. They need to be briefed. New councillors need to be briefed. Returning councillors need to be briefed. New staff need to be briefed. Where's the continuity? So I would implore this council to, to plant a flag and say, from here on, no more. Come up with a process that establishes- Come up with a process that establishes continuity so that accountability can be established for these deals that we make. And then there's no follow-up. And then, you know, thousands of people fall through the cracks and, and suffer because of that, so. Do what you can, please, for the better of the town. And please, at least two times a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Latasha Barrage, followed by Chanté Dusant.
Good evening. I'm Latasha Barrage. I live at 254 Branford Avenue, Building 43. I'm here today. I started about a year ago. I have reached out for help because I had issues with mold. I've been there for about 12 years. As you can hear my voice, ever since I moved there, I am always hoarse. I have lots of respiratory issues. I have asthma now. I have issues with sinus infections constantly. Since I've been there, I've complained about mold. I brought pictures. The first four pictures that you see is my, was my bathroom before they came and covered it up with paint, as they normally do. The second set of pictures you'll see is basements of those that have been locked so you can't see what is behind those doors. We have asked for help continuously. Continuously we get ignored, even the mayor himself. He did not get involved until I took out an article in the paper. Once I put the article in the paper, I did call him. He called and said, I will call the office. No check on me, no nothing. But soon as the article came out in the paper, now is wanting to call, wanting to inbox me and all that. But before, there was no response. As far as the office goes, they do not reply to you at all. Donna Brown, I had never heard of or saw a Donna Brown until recently. I too am one of the ones that was given one of the notices to acquit after Senator Blumenthal came to my house. I was given a paper to acquit and they brought up that I did not pay four months of rent. I had to go to the bank and actually pull up, because I pay everything with a check, because you cannot trust them at all. So I had to go and pull up all the checks to show. And of course, Branford Manor signed each and every one of them and they were paid. I just want to bring to your attention today that we're tired of feeling neglected. We're tired of feeling the lack of respect. A lot of us did not ask to just say, oh, I want to live in Branford Manor. Before I moved there, I worked at Pfizer as security. I worked in group homes and took care of the mentally challenged adults. But after having my child, I developed lupus. And for those who don't know, it's an autoimmune disease, which I had to learn how to walk again. I had, my kidneys had shut down at one point. My heart had started shutting down. I was in the hospital for seven months. After that, thankfully, my kidneys have gotten restored and things are looking a little better for me with the new technology and of course, God. But unfortunately, I cannot work the way I used to work. There's some days I can't even get out of bed. And in the conditions that we're living in, it makes it no better. Everybody says just move. How do you move off of living off of $1,500 a month? I get $1,500 a month. I have to pay rent. I had to get a car. I have to pay a car note. I'm denied food stamps because of the child support that's counted for that does not always come. And this is what the office does. They've played so many people, they get their rent, they say they did not pay rent, and they did pay rent. And we're just, we're not coming because this is something that we just feel like wasting your time for. But when you go home at night, think about how we have to have our children. When we have children, we want to protect our children. I have to lay there every night knowing that I'm in a place where my child is breathing in polluted air. But there's nothing that I can do about it. Why? Because there's no low-income places. There's no, there's nowhere else to go. So we're reaching out today. We're asking that you guys just consider us. Even like the other lady said, I too have the brown stuff that leaks down in my bathroom. She was told it was metal. I was told it was soap. They come in when they feel like it. I have pain medication. I told them not to come in my house because I would be back home shortly to wait till I get there. Because four years, I had no smoke detectors. I was going to look into foster care, so they came to look at the house. I said, I will be home shortly. They went in anyway, and guess what? My pain medicine is gone. I can't get pain medicine again for 30 days. So for 30 days, I have to rock and take Tylenol because I can't have the pain medication because somebody came in and stole my pain medication. The cabinets that they put in are falling out, fell out on top of my daughter's head the other night. All the fixtures that they have put up were just thrown up. We had to request for peep holes to be put in the door. They put no peep holes in the door. The doors were just thrown on. I have a cover down there to keep the outside from coming in. Everything is just thrown together. The door, the stairs is falling apart. But when you ask for help, they don't want to give you help. There's so many people that is afraid to come out and talk because they bring up old stuff, like they said. They threaten you and they do all different types of things. Out of all the people that were given the acquit letters, they are only the ones who have spoken out. There are other people who have been waiting for agencies to help them out with rent. None of them have received papers. Only those of us who have spoken out. We no longer want to be afraid to speak out. I will continue to stand up for the people. Even if I move from Branford, I will continue to be a voice for the people. And I hope you all take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Chanté Dusant, followed by John Davis.
Good evening, members, members of the council. My name's Chanté Dusant. I live at 20 Nathan Hale in Groton. So there's a lot I, I want to say, but I'm going to try my best to keep this to the point and short. A rhetorical question. How did all of this, these issues going on with Branford Manor fall through the cracks? Well, I'll tell you how they fell through the cracks. Because before these brave residents of Branford Manor came here to speak up tonight, there were people like me that lived there for 10 to 12 years that were afraid to speak up. I moved to Branford Manor when I became a single mom in 2007. I lived there subsequently for about 11 years with both my kids. During the time I lived there, I can echo every single thing that these residents have said tonight. So I'm not going to go in detail about them. But I do want you to know that living there is not like living anywhere else that I know of. You are bullied. You are terrorized. You feel like you are being terrorized by management. You are bullied. If you speak up, if you become a problem, you are targeted for anything. Violation for something on your porch. They find an excuse of a dollar debt you, you didn't pay three months ago. You get a notice, an eviction notice for any little thing that happens at Branford Manor. They use that to give you the idea that they have the power and they will pull the rug under, from under your feet at any given notice. And that is a terrible feeling to have when you're trying to provide a roof over your children's head and you're on one income or you have issues going on. I have had mold in my bathroom that, I moved out, by the way, right before all these, while these renovations were taking place. Because my rent went up from about $800 to about $1,400 something without any justification. I didn't know who to talk to. I didn't know what to do. So I got a second and a third job and I moved out. Because I'm not paying $1,400 to live under those circumstances. And by far, I applaud these ladies that have endured all of these unlivable and unsafe circumstances at Branford Manor. I didn't, I, I, I didn't have the courage to speak up then. I wish I did. But beyond all that, as I'm sitting here tonight and I'm listening to all of these details, my daughter also developed asthma when I lived there. She no longer has asthma, I'm realizing. And I'm wondering, was it the mold situation? I had mold in my bathroom. I have had plenty of days where I'm sitting and eating dinner in my dining room and there's water coming from my ceiling. They cut the paint. They bleed out the water. They come back sometimes. It's, it's, it's a 50/50 shot. I've had people kick in my doors. The, the locks are not very safe. I've had a few break-ins here or there. I've had people that probably shouldn't have been there through some other resident, perhaps, in my basement, not in my basement, in my attic hiding and almost falling through my roof. Not at like 9 o'clock at night, not through mine, but they fell through the basements. There's a lot, I mean, the, the roof and my neighbors. There's a lot of unsafe situations there. Maintenance doesn't seem to be certified nor qualified to be fixing a lot of the things that they are doing there. The rent increases are never justified. And if you question and you want some transparency, again, you're targeted, you're bullied, and you feel terrorized. So I just want to make it really brief by saying, I applaud again these ladies for doing what I could not do 10 years ago. I respect you guys so much for coming out here tonight and bringing some awareness to your situation and light. And I really hope, and I'm pleading to the council, to help the residents of Groton Manor in any way that we can. We talked about affordable housing plan tonight. I hope that this is also being remembered and noted when we are going through the plan for affordable housing. Because there isn't enough in Groton. There are no options for these ladies to say, this is happening here. My health is at risk. My safety is at risk. So I am going to apply somewhere else. Crystal Avenue in New London exists no more. Nothing replaced it. So I don't know where the numbers are coming from that we have affordable housing and we're meeting a certain percentage. I don't see it and I don't feel it. And I'm pretty sure these residents can echo that as well. So we really need to take a look at that as we're going through it. We said it's being looked at or renewed every five years. I hope to be present here and be a part of that because this is important. And the town of Groton includes every type of resident. Low-income, high-income, different colors, and everyone should be considered in these types of plans. Thank you for listening.
John Davis, followed by Genevieve Searf.
Hi, my name's John Davis. Excuse me. I live at 198 Shore Avenue. And yes, I too want to talk about short-term rentals. As sort of an aside, I was, I was reading through correspondence recently from people in our group and somebody had quantified, said they had done the work and had come up with about 505 short-term rental opportunities in Groton. So I will just say offhandedly, if all this housing stock wasn't dedicated to making money on a short-term basis, perhaps some of those 500 locations could be available for issues like we've been hearing tonight. I want to say something briefly, but I'm going to email you all because, because I actually want to talk about something else. But there's some action going on, which I really appreciate, with the town council, the planning department, the town manager's office, you know, kind of all of you. And you're starting to get the ball rolling on looking at regulations. But I want to point out, and I'll send the detail, there's really a lot of bias in these queries. For example, this great site called Greater Groton, the, the website, if you will, that gets people discussing issues, very well organized. But in the section on short-term rentals, they do a poll. And nowhere in it does it ask, would you like to maintain the existing law zoning regulations and rules? It's, do you want to change things a little bit or a lot? Do you want to regulate them a little bit or a lot? But nowhere does it say, are you interested in maintaining the existing zoning regulations? That really reflects, I don't really know where it comes from, but it's a rather glaring bias. And anyway, I'll send an email about all that stuff. And actually would ask that the Greater Groton Poll on Short-Term Rentals be rewritten and be polled and redone. I don't think it's really a valid sample at all. And, and I'll, I'll put that in the email. So anyway, what I really wanted to say was, and if there's time, I'd like to read this, is a group has formed to try to address some of these issues responsibly. It's called Groton Homes, Not Hotels. The subtitle is, It's Nice to Know Your Neighbors. Who we are. We are residents, so what I'm reading is the mission statement, sort of the, the outline of what this organization is about, who we are. We're residents, taxpayers, and voters from throughout Groton. And we're concerned about the encroachment of commercial transient lodging, businesses like Airbnb and Verbo, et cetera, disrupting our residential neighborhoods and destroying our sense of community and quality of life. Our purpose. We are focused on our residential neighborhoods and preventing the reduction of our housing inventory to benefit investors looking to profit from the short-term rental business at the expense of homeowners, leaseholders, and renters. Our guiding principles. Advocate for the enforcement of Groton's current zoning regulations that in fact do not permit transient lodging in residential districts. You're not being asked to, so to speak, recreate the wheel. It already exists. Advocate to restrict short-term rentals, defined as less than 30 days, to non-residential neighborhoods. That's where we have lodging already out on Route 1, if you will. You know what I mean by that? In, in areas that more reasonably take that kind of business. And finally, encourage the development of available housing throughout our neighborhoods. Work with town government to support housing opportunities for all residents in Groton. There will be a website up soon, which is not tonight. It's called GrotonHomesNotHotels.com. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Genevieve Searf, followed by LaShel Koschmider.
Let's see, can you start with yourself and just pass them around?
Certainly, yeah. Hi, my name is Genevieve Searf. I live at 6 Pearl Street in Mystic. I'd first like to say that I was really too sick to come here tonight, but Portia forced me to. And so what I, first thing I'd like to say is, you had promised us that we could get to speak at least twice a month. And at this point, this is like the second town council meeting where it's, citizen petitions have gone on for three hours. I think it might be a good idea in the next meetings of the Rules Committee is that you add some speaking time for the citizens. Because my feeling, it's only going to get worse. I got back into this game a year ago and it's gotten a lot worse in the last year. So please consider that in the rules. Give us more speaking time. So I've got five different things to speak about tonight. I'm going to have to go really fast. Otherwise, Councilor Lindes is going to throw me out of here. The first thing I wanted to address is the short-term rentals. Because I've gotten involved with that as if I didn't have enough on my plate. And I live at 8 Pearls, I live at 6 Pearl Street, which is right next to this, the most infamous short-term rental that we have now, which is 8 Pearl Street. When I first moved there, a friend of mine told me there was a registered sexual predator living, living at 8 Pearl Street. I probably shouldn't say this on television, but I thought it would be funny. Because at this point, now that I have this short-term rental with nine cars in it and 16 beds, I'd almost rather have the first guy that I had hit there. Anyway, in, in the meantime, the house was bought by a very nice beer distributor who renovated the house and with whom we discussed plantations. So as Bruce pointed out, it was nice to have a neighbor. I told him about the local nurseries and where he could get nice bushes. And he showed me all around the house and I enjoyed him very much too. And now we have, and this research is thanks to the best researcher in town, Catherine Pratt, who's not here tonight, but who allowed me to use her research. She's the best Googler in town. The, the house at 8 Pearl Street that had nine cars in the driveway, very much embarrassing me when I had my car. me when I had my college friend come down last weekend, and I had bragged to her that I'd moved into this cute place in Mystic, and instead of that, I'm next to this, like, you know, huge bachelor party with all these cars and everything. The house is now owned by Habakkuk Capital Group LLC, and the landlord is a fellow named Emmanuel Ku, K-U, officer. There are articles, which Katie found, in about 10 articles, which I will forward to all of you, about how he's being investigated by the state district attorney for being a derelict landlord in Hartford, and there are some in New York. He owns properties in four states. He owns not only next door to me, but another, at least one other Airbnb in North Stonington. And he names them all LLCs. In order to figure out which ones are his, we have to go find all the LLCs and find that he's the officer and find the same address in the Bronx, New York. So this is not, definitely not somebody, you know, that we want to start buying up houses in Mystic, because this is what's happening. People are coming from out of town, and it's lucrative to buy these houses, and it's lucrative to put 15 or 16 beds in them. I've seen one advertised for 16 beds. That is too many beds. That is just too many people. So something has to happen here. You know, the Horstley Witten Group is coming back. Unfortunately, the same people that gave them their guidance the last time are the same people who are going to be giving them their guidance this time. And you councilors, who I'm going to remind you all tonight, are driving the bus, all right? Not the people giving the bad advice to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You guys are driving the bus. That's what it says in the charter. The citizens of Groton come first, then comes the town council, in terms of hierarchy, and then staff. So you must tell them, and you're learning to tell them things, every single one of you. Councilor Franco, we know that you're very focused and you like to get what you want. Councilor Jones, I really admired your trip to the data centers. I thought that was fantastic of you to go see for yourself, because there's nothing like seeing for yourself. Andre, you've been at this game for a long time. You know, I care enormously about you and trust you. One, I don't know you that well, but you know that I've also said that I trust you to do a good job, even though it's a tough one. Portia, I don't have to say anything about. Scott's my buddy. This gentleman over here, Councilor McBride, has been doing wonderful things lately. And I'm also going to address one of my major issue here, is something that he's addressed. So I'm hoping he's going to back me up on that. And Councilor Casieri, you have also shown your ability to look into the details and to make up your own mind on things. So I would say that the time is over when you allow staff to bring you something and you just rubber stamp it. You shouldn't have, because otherwise, these meetings are going to be going on for five hours.
Thank you. You're up five.
My five minutes are over? Okay, just let me say one more thing about the thing that you're voting on tonight, which is nobody else has spoken about, which is the mill rate. I handed you out some sheets, and the sheets are based on the brand list that I got off the town website. And I want you to see, in the second row of the first sheet, the residential tax changes, and this is where Councilor McBride, I think, brought this up. Because of the revow being synchronous with the real estate bubble, this happens every 10 years, because the revows are every five years, so every third revow, there is this like wave of synchronicity between the revow and the real estate bubble, which causes residential real estate to go up usually about 30% or so.
Thank you.
And commercial real estate does not go up. So I just want you to see here that the residential tax change, just give me 30 seconds more. Residential tax changes, 30% of the homes, or the tax is going to decrease for them. 60% of the homes, their tax is going to go between 0 and 25%, and 5% of the homes, their taxes are going to go between 26 and 50% increase.
Thank you.
Commercial industrial, which is on the bottom line here, 80% of those properties are going to see a decrease in their taxes. Let me repeat that. Commercial industrial in the town of Groton, 80% of those properties are going to see a tax decrease. That includes places like Pfizer and Electric Boat, and not that I don't love Pfizer and Electric Boat. They pay plenty of taxes, but this year, they won't be paying as much. And then 10%, we'll see, 10, only 15% of commercial industrial, commercial industrial properties will see, you're going to see a tax increase, too, so hold your breath here.
Your time is up, Jen.
So, so.
The time is up. Other people have not been allowed.
When you vote for the mill rate tonight, I wish you would take a little more out of the, I wish you would take a little more about your, from one of your rainy day funds, which are bloated anyway, all of them. You've got like millions and millions of dollars in these funds.
LaShelle Koschmider.
Take a couple of million dollar more.
Point of water.
LaShelle Koschmider is right here. All right. How you guys doing? So I'm another resident of Branford Manor. Sorry, I'm very impatient at this point. I'm the last one. I will say that I've been there about 16 years. The current management is probably one of the most unprofessionals that I've had to deal with within that time. Folks are belittled, they're disrespected most of the time, and if you point out any mistake management makes, you are targeted and penalized. The courteousness and professionalism does not exist in the office mentality. First to losing my file multiple times with my personal info and my children's info that has been mailed to other people's apartments. I'm going to go on the side of the electrical issue first, that no one has kind of confronted, that sometimes your walls feel like they're on fire, and your appliances get burnt out, and then it takes forever for them to come in and change your electrical outlets. Mold is a huge issue. I do not have a basement there. I am in the center of Branford Manor. So therefore, the mold has been caused and created a pandemic at this point, because all the outer rings have the mold, and it's now influxing to the center of Branford Manor. My mold grows from the top to the bottom, and when you talk to management, you're ignored, or you're told it's a joke. And Ledge Light itself has told me that they cannot assist me in anything, that there is no measurable amount of unhealthy mold, which we all know science proves very differently. Granted, as a single mother, it's been very beneficial to have somewhere that is affordable to live, but it has a lot of repercussions. Since our meeting on Sunday, I have received a new lease today with a $90 increase. I pay $1,100 to live in public housing, where I can't use one of my bedrooms, my cabinet's in my kitchen, I cannot even keep dishes in. They're on a cat, they're on a rack in my dining room with garbage bags over them, because I'm afraid for anything to grow on them. And granted, while renovations were completed, they were done haphazardly, without any residents in mind. And I'll keep it really short and sweet. You can polish a turd, but it's still going to be a piece of shit in the end. We are all screaming for help. I have letters in my phone that I can forward to you guys from other people that have worked there, contacting HUD, screaming for us. No one's helping. Donna is a joke, and honestly, should be incarcerated for some of the things she has done there. That at this point, it's just ridiculous. I have a son who is in the Army and couldn't even go for airborne because of his issues developed by the mold, that he can't be in an unpressurized vehicle anymore. Granted, he is a sniper now, and he's going for Army Ranger, but due to his health effects from living in Branford Manor, he can't do what he originally wanted to do. So at this rate, I'm really hoping it's really looked into, because it's a joke. And as far as that there's none of this going on, I mean, there's new buildings being built over there, there's new bars being built over there. It's kind of like, come on, there's money in this town. And honestly, there's more poverty in Groton than anyone really wants to recognize. And I really wish the room had more people in here for me to speak, because I was going to ask them, as they felt bad for their grievances, that you are part of our community and we are part of their community. Are they willing to stand with us as well? And that's really all I have to say. I'm sorry I've been up since 4:30. I'm exhausted. I'm sure you guys are, too. I won't keep you. But really, open your eyes, because just because there's new paint on it, doesn't mean it's not dirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Geraldine Murray, followed by Kim Napier. Is Kim, Geraldine Murray or Kim Napier here? No? Okay. Ashana Napier? No? Linda Vogel?
Hello. Linda Vogel, 358 P. Quad Avenue, Mystic. And I too need to say that I'm here for short, talking about STRs, but listening to the Branford Manor conditions, which I really did not know how deplorable they are. And I certainly hope, having heard all of this, that the town council can do something to contact the management of Branford Manor. And it is a tax-abated property, which is even all the more shocking. So I just have to say that. I will then read you my very short thing on short-term rentals. I think that, I'm just going to reiterate everything you've already heard. I have three major concerns about the proliferation of short-term rentals in Groton. The first one, of course, is the damage it does to the neighborhood, so that your neighborly community-town sense is being eradicated or eliminated as each property becomes a transient, a home for transient visitors. Nothing wrong necessarily with the visitors, it's the transience. I didn't have my glasses. The second problem with the STRs, as I think again has been illustrated, apart from Mrs. DeSantis, more and more of the STRs are being bought up and owned by out-of-state big businesses or individuals, only to generate profits. And the money, the profits that are being generated do not come back to the town. The transient holiday seekers aren't here to support our schools, our libraries, our sewage systems. I think I've said this to you all before, but I think it's a very important thing. And while there may be very good individual hosts of STRs, and I was actually one myself a long time ago, but the problem is Airbnb does not follow through on bad guests. And if as a host, you give a bad report about a guest, they ding you, the host. So this notion that Airbnb is going to protect us or the properties is truly not accurate. I'd like you to keep that in mind. And finally, I think that the STRs generate, a pen. I think that they generate a quality of transience to neighborhoods that in the very long run is going to be very destructive to the values of the town of Groton. And it is not a problem that's limited just to Mystic or just to Noack. New London has a plethora of STRs, town of Groton does. You can go on an Airbnb site, as David Collins pointed out in an article. All you do is put in a zip code, and you can, and it shows how many properties are now being listed as STRs. And you can look to see what the rentals are, so that very often, you can rent a week at a nice STR for $5,000, $6,000. Translate that to a monthly rental, and you can see what would happen to normal, regular, working people who might want to rent in this area or purchase a home. So thank you very much. I very much appreciate the attention you're giving us all.
Thank you.
No, it's not mine.
Next is Jeff Kerr.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Kerr from 6 Ashby Street. Thank you all for your service to the town. Really appreciate it. Once again, I'll keep it short, just like everybody else, but I'm here to talk about short-term rentals. Big takeaway from my wife and I is that the bottom line on these things is that they're hotels and not homes. First thing to keep in mind, as many have alluded to, just under the Planning and Zoning Code, short-term rental is technically not even a permitted use in a residential zone. You know, the example I give is, you know, I wouldn't be able to just open up a gas station or a car wash or a laundromat or something out of my own house. I don't see what would give me the right to open up a hotel either. The other thing, it's kind of related to what we've been discussing tonight with the Branford issue, is just the impacts on housing availability. So as was mentioned, while this probably started out innocently enough with people that were legitimately living in their homes and renting out a room or an adjacent structure on their property, this has accelerated to the point where we have commercial real estate investors coming in, buying up well above asking price, because all the assumptions that they're making about the value of the home is that it's a income generating property and not a home for somebody to live in. And it completely disrupts the model of a single-family home, and it disrupts the market to the point where it makes it unaffordable for people that are working in the economy here to actually live there. And it's drive, it's going to eventually drive our town to the point where we're basically kind of making an implicit choice that we're prioritizing tourism over all the other industries that we have in this thriving town. The last thing I'll go through is just kind of a vignette on like, kind of a, what the long-term impact of this is, because I know there's a lot of discussion about how there's benefits to small businesses because of short-term rentals, but I think it ignores kind of the longer-term impacts that occur from a lot of these properties in the long run. So I just always go back to my wife's hometown of Isle of Palms in Charleston, South Carolina. So when she was growing up, Hurricane Hugo hit. It disrupted the local economy, and the city of Charleston made a decision that they were going to focus on tourism above any other industry. And as a result, there was a lot of regulations put in place incentivizing people to buy up these short-term rentals as properties in the town. Initially, there was a boost to small businesses, as expected, but over time, the home values continued to creep up, so people that were living on a fixed income could no longer afford to stay in their homes, drove out the people that were local from Charleston, took away neighbors that people had known for years, because they just couldn't afford to live there anymore. My in-law is stuck around the town, and they don't have a single neighbor anymore. Every single house in their neighborhood is a short-term rental, and it's a seasonal rental, renter six months a year. You know, that's 20 to 30 years down the road from where we're at right now. So I would just encourage everybody to keep in mind, I know we're in a place today where usually we're kind of looking at the next election cycle or the next quarter, if you're in the business world, but looking at the long-term of our community, as Bruce said, you know, it's nice to know your neighbor. So that's all I had to say, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Switching to Zoom, is Kelly Paulson online?
So she raised her hand.
Thank you for making it, making the speaker, I really appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and town council members. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinance and enforcement of zonings, no more than six unrelated people in a single-family house. My house and property have been flooded with light trespassing to my neighbor's house for over a year and a half, over five years, counting people that lived there before them. The other neighbor across the street from me has put up a very large LED flag made up with multiple strands of LED lights. He has also put up a lighted flag pole. The police came through the neighborhood last Thursday, asking neighbors whose houses are not directly flooded with light trespass from these lights, if the lights happen to bother them. The neighbor with the LED flag added another light right after the police came through the neighborhood. Then, within a couple of days, he changed the additional light so that it goes from bright to very bright with the motion of the flag that's right next to it. My across-the-street neighbors are continuing to escalate. They have added even more people to the household and even more cars. It is now up to eight to nine people living there and 10 cars, not including guests and not including the guests that spend multiple nights there. They continue to make sure someone parks right where I back out of my driveway, instead of the multiple open spots on their property. They are also now trespassing on my property. I had to call the police, even though they had threatened that if I wasn't calling the police, it would get worse. The first officer argued with every single thing I said to him. I told him I had to move my stones to try and block the I told him I had to move my stones to try and block them from gaining access to my property and the officer informed me that I never even moved them. The next time I had to call, dispatch would not send an officer out until I verified that I had proof that they were on my property. I showed the officer the proof. When he came out to the house, the officer stood there and kept on asking me, "Well, how long were they on your property?" I told him that they were not to ever trespass on my property. After all, they light trespass into my home every single night, all night long. All these men are constantly trespassing into my home. He kept on standing there saying, "Well, how long were they on your property?" And I said, "Long enough for me to..." And he cut me off and asked me once again, "How long were they on my property?" This is the same as, "Nobody is allowed to touch you without your explicit permission." You call the police for help, the police stands there going, "Well, how long were you touched for?" Same thing. I pay taxes in this town and I have every right to be able to call the police for help without being treated like this, especially since I have called the police to come out to my house for trespass with the current residents two times, that's it. And two times prior with the previous residents, when they would not get off my property and when they stole my property. This is my home and my property. I have every right to enjoy my property without trespassing. They are aggressively flooding my house with light. They are escalating. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinance, like many other towns in Connecticut already have. Respectfully request enforcement of zonings no more than six unrelated people in a single-family house. Many towns in Connecticut have light trespass and light pollution ordinances already in place that state that lights need to be shielded at all times. They are not to be seen above ground level. Floodlights are not allowed. And I can almost guarantee that these officers would not tolerate this happening at their house for one single night, not alone, every single night, all night long. And an example for the town of Eastford, all businesses, residential and community, roadways, sidewalks and town property luminaries should be placed and installed with the idea of being a good neighbor by keeping unnecessary direct light from shining onto budding properties or roadways, both public and private. Please help. Please... Please provide a light trespass ordinance. They're getting worse. They're escalating. I don't know what's going to happen next. And I can't, clearly cannot count on the police to offer any help. All they do is come out and treat me the way that they've been treating me. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is Tom Bradham online? No? Okay. Christina Rothenmel? You're muted?
Sorry about that. My name is Christina Rothenmel. I live at 164 Branford Avenue. I've lived in Branford Manor for 12 years. One year at 164 Branford and 11 years at 155 Mather Avenue. I'm going to share my screen with you. I want you to see the pictures that I endured last year. Let me see here. Here we go. All right. We started complaining about the mold in late 2019 when our switch plate in the kitchen started curling out away from the wall. And you can see that the mold is behind there, right back. Maintenance would come in, they would wipe it down with bleach, replace the switch plate. After the second, third time, they literally poured bleach down into the hole in the wall, which scared the hell out of me because I thought, "Don't turn that switch on because it's going to catch fire." I had called Ledgley. They told me that it could have been a mold score that came through the window, which I didn't buy into because it kept happening over and over again. I happened to be at the sink one day to see Terry's plumbing outside of my window in the fall of 2020 where the crawl space was. He told me there had been a pipe leaking all winter long. And he discussed the mold issue and he said, "You have mold in your wall?" And I said, "Yes, why?" And he said, "Well, Branford knew about the mold, but mold remediation was too expensive, so they weren't going to do it." This is when our floors started to buckle. And it got really, really bad that the whole floor started to buckle in the kitchen. I lost my place. I'm sorry. I heard from three or four other neighbors that they were having similar issues. I went into their apartments and was aghast at the conditions of their apartment. We all showed each other and cannot believe that nothing was being done about it. They finally came and were going to fix the floors with one-day notice. They made us carry all of our stuff upstairs and with no help. And considering my disabilities, this was something difficult for me to do. They replaced all the hardwood floors then with laminate floors. And with the short time, those were buckling as well. I was admitted into the hospital then for 29 days in the month of April of 2021 and I spent 29 days in ICU. Almost died of heart failure, not realizing that the mold situation was a contributing factor to it because of my lung conditions. I went into the kitchen cabinet one day thereafter and noticed black mold growing in the backs of our cabinets. So I called the office immediately. I was so upset. And they sent a maintenance guy down to remove the cabinet. And when he pulled the cabinet off of the wall... Let me get to it. Hang on one second. This is what we saw behind our cabinet. We ran out of the house because it smelled so bad. And he took the cabinet up to the office and, God bless his heart, his name was Trevor. He immediately took it up to the office and told them, "These people cannot live like this. This lady is sick." My physician, upon seeing it, said to me, "Christina, you need to get it out of there today or you are going to die." That is when they put us into hotels. I believe if it wasn't for Trevor, we wouldn't have ever got to the hotel now. I believe we would still be there fighting, trying to get something done. My point in all this is Ledgley had been out there twice. The building inspector, the fire marshal, the mayor, the office, and nothing had been done. In fact, myself and a couple neighbors got eviction notices. For me, it was for my air conditioners that I had a 504 on file for three years. But they couldn't find it amazingly. Fortunately, my physician keeps these things on file because she knows how the office is because we had to deal with them before. Now I'm sick and dying of lung disease. Several neighbors in the L of Building 18 have illnesses as well. Lupus, MS. Wonder where that came from? We've heard lupus mentioned by several tenants tonight. We were given three days' notice to move. It was 105 degrees out. I was threatened by Stephanie. If I was not out by 5:00 PM on the 30th, they were going to charge me another day. And I said, "For what? Another shitty apartment?" When we moved, we found mold everywhere. We found it in the closets, behind pictures, even in the caps of my pill bottles. So we get over here to the new apartments and the basements are locked. I wonder why? Because there's mold in the basement here as well. We have photos of that as well. When they left, the doors unlocked. I wanted to see if there was mold down there and sure enough, there was mold.
Thank you. Your time has expired?
I'm sorry?
Your time has expired. If you have additional comments, you can submit them to the town clerk.
What I'm going to say is, you guys gave these guys a tax abate, okay? I'm dying, okay? And it's directly related to Branford Manor. I have counsel. I'm suing them. And, you know, I expected eviction notice after this. I really, truly do. But take a look at this, guys. Something has to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Melendez, if the council wishes, could she just finish whatever else she has? I really think this is pertinent and I would allow this woman to at least finish if she at least has another minute.
Every other person had to abide by the rules.
I understand that. I was looking for an exception. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I was trying to get extra time for you to speak, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak at this time?
Hello?
Hi, you have the floor.
Hello, hi. I'm a resident at Branford Manor. Can everyone see me?
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay. So I'm a former resident. I mean, I'm still a resident at Branford Manor. I live at, I used to live at 163 Mather Avenue. I actually lived, I'm sorry, I got a little emotional because I lived three years down from the woman that was just speaking. And I had a horrible, horrible experience with my baby. Right now, I'm currently residing at Avery Avenue. And I'm still having issues here from traumatic experiences. I tried not to be so involved because it brought too much bad memories for me. And I'm trying to move out because of the experiences I've had. I'm hospitalized with my baby. I've had to remove myself and go into hotels because I was being ignored. Body out of my L. And my, at the time, she was 20. And I emailed them on a Saturday because and said, "Hey, why are you still here? You have a baby. You shouldn't be here. It's not safe for you to live in your building." And so I said, "Oh, I didn't know anybody moved out." So I sent an email and I had to wait till Monday. That same Saturday, I had to go to the emergency pediatric's office up in Manchester to bring my daughter there because she was having trouble breathing and coughing and completely broke out in hives and her skin was just very pale. She had to be on a butyral. She had to be on antibiotics. I had an emergency visit to the allergy specialist. Turns out she had two allergies to mold, black mold and another type of mold. So I immediately packed my things right away and I put myself into a hotel. Then I received an email from them saying that they were going to, you know, putting up money for there. And they told me I had just a few days to move myself out of my apartment with no notice. A year and a half prior to that, I had just moved in. A couple months later, my floors started buckling. At that time, my baby just started crawling. There was bugs crawling out of the wood there and I was emailing them and I waited for months. No one ever came. Then one of the management people, Dottie, had just started knocking on my door. It was around 5:00 in the afternoon. And she said, "Oh, I want to see your floors." So I let her in and she saw my floors and she's like, "Oh, okay", and just walked back out and closed the door. So really quickly, I don't want to talk too, too much because I know I'm on a time limit, but I moved into Branford Manor under the impression that it was a safe environment as a mom to get myself together, get back on my feet, work with my income and be able to finish school and have, get my bachelor's and my doctorate in dentistry. Because I ended up, you know, having a baby and I wanted to be able to be financially stable, but also focus on my education. I couldn't do that because all of my finances went out. I had to pay for two air purifiers. I had to pay for a dehumidifier. One day I walked into my new unit and there was a dehumidifier in the middle of my living room. I hadn't, I don't know where it came from. And all of my furniture was completely ruined. I had to throw all of my daughter's clothes away. I had to buy her branded clothes. I don't know how much I spent on a hotel. I was reimbursed for some. I mean, they took the fee for some of it, but I didn't get reimbursed back for my furniture. And that furniture was for thousands of dollars. I understand with renters insurance, like all that happened, but, you know, now my daughter's on butyral. I've had many, many, you know, respiratory issues. My, I'm constantly, now I'm at a stomach doctor for them to try to figure out where the pain on the side of my stomach is coming from. Within the past year, that just happened. I've never had any health issues since I've moved in here. And my daughter now has respiratory issues. She has extremely bad asthma. She has eczema. Her skin completely broke out. She has white patches all over her skin. I mean, it was two years dealing with this. So I don't know how else to express it, but it's frustrating. I just recently got married. They told my husband he couldn't be a part of the lease because of me too much. I don't know why, because I thought that, you know, you can always add anyone to the lease. He was just moving in so that we can be financially stable to just move out. I told him I was uncomfortable living here. And because of how the, you know, the rent is right now with all of the real estate and everything, it's really expensive and, you know, being newlyweds and having kids and trying to get settled and me finishing school and him trying to keep stable and provide for us, it's very difficult and for them to tell him he can't move in here.
Thank you.
I don't understand.
Thank you. Your time has expired?
I don't, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
No.
No? Is there anyone else in the room who hasn't spoken and would like to speak at this time? Okay. Oh, please approach the podium. Just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Lohan Leary and I live at 222 Branford Avenue, Building 42. Yeah, like Christie, Christie said, I lost it there because, yeah, we had the same thing where we had to move and we weren't given notice. And now, my husband recently looked into our online account and they're charging us money for, they claim damages to the apartment. And we dealt with the mold and all that and then now they're coming at us with that. It's really... And then, the new apartment we have, I didn't want to mention it to anybody, but I'm going to, is every time when it's really hot on hot days and humid and stuff, once you get to like halfway on our stairs, you smell mold. And I was told by Jody, my other neighbor, at the time when we had to do all that at the hotel. Jody and Taryn, the apartment that I'm in, they happened to see the basement. We never got to see the basement at all. Right away, they were on that, "You can't reuse your basement", before, even before these letters, so we never got to use it. And, but Taryn and Jody saw mold, black, like, like this in our basement, so it just adds to it of why we can't use our basement. And pretty much they're hiding that from us and we're stuck with the smell. I have health issues from living on Mather Ave. But, yeah, I'm with everyone here tonight that said about Branford. And I hope something can be done. Please. And I hope something can be done, please.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Please approach the podium. Okay. Seeing none, that will be the end of receipt of citizens' petitions. And we'll have a five-minute break, we'll be back at nine forty-seven.
Recore.
Back from recess at nine fifty-three. So we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. I make a motion to approve the consent calendar consisting of various appointments, reappointments for May, the May third, 2022 minutes, and May tenth, 2022 special meeting minutes, and the special trust fund contributions for May, so moved.
Second, Bumgarner.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bumgarner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Excuse me?
Yes?
We were sort of going quick and I was a little flaking there. I just wanted to make a notation that the consent calendar included an appointment of Russell Spalding, and it's my duty to divulge, he is my uncle, and I wanted just to let everybody know.
Thank you. Gonna skip past to new business. Establishment of tax rate for general fund fiscal year ending 2023. And we have Director Landry here for...
You're gonna put it?
Right. Correct. Let me find the page.
Yeah.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution establishing tax rate for general fund taxes due on July 1st, 2022, whereas the representative town meeting has approved a general fund budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling And whereas the town council estimates cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2023, current property taxes will total $41,555,862. Now therefore, be it resolved that $4 million is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July 1st, 2022, to partially meet expenditure appropriations contained in the FYE 2023 general fund budget, and be it further resolved that $97,68,085 is the amount that needs to be raised from property taxes, and be it further resolved that the tax rate for taxes due July 1st, 2022, is hereby established at 21.28 mils per thousand dollars of assessed valuation to raise $97,68,085, with the formula of $97,68,085 divided by 4,611,207,867 divided by 98.9% times 1,000 equals 21.28 mils. Aye, so moved.
Second.
Second, Parker.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, I got the updated Mumford Cove one. Resolution establishing tax rate for Mumford Cove District due July 1st, 2022, whereas the representative town meeting has approved a Mumford Cove District budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling $21,230. And whereas the town council estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2023, current property taxes will total $0. Now therefore, be it resolved that $0 is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July 1st, 2022, to partially meet expenditure appropriations contained in the FYE 2023 Mumford Cove District Fund Budget, and be it further resolved that the tax rate for taxes due for the Mumford Cove District Fund on July 1st, 2022, is hereby established at .28 mils per thousand dollars of assessed valuation to raise $21,230, with the calculation $21,230 divided by $76,222,310 divided by 99.3% times 1,000 is .28 mils, so moved.
Second, Bumgarner.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bumgarner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Resolution establishing tax rate for Groton Sewer District due July 1st, 2022, whereas the representative town meeting has approved a Groton Sewer District budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling $1,334,997. And whereas the town council estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2023, current property taxes will total $5,330. Now therefore, be it resolved that $200,000 is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July 1st, 2022, to partially meet expenditure appropriations contained in the FYE 2023 Sewer District Fund Budget, and be it further resolved that the tax rate for taxes due for the Groton Sewer District Fund on July 1st, 2022, is hereby established at 0.37 mils per thousand dollars of assessed valuation to raise $1,129,667,000 divided by 3 billion, 53, 53 million, 732,496, excluding motor vehicles, divided by 99.6% times 1,000 equals 0.37 mils, so moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Bumgarner, seconded by Franco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, on to Affordable Housing Plan. Page thirty-seven. Resolution to adopt the Affordable Housing Plan, whereas the state of Connecticut requires that all municipalities have an affordable housing plan adopted prior to July 1st, 2022, and whereas the town of Groton received a grant for $15,000 from the state of Connecticut to assist in the development of a town of Groton Affordable Housing Plan, and whereas the town formed an advisory committee to assist in the development of the plan and hired RKG and Associates to develop the plan based upon state requirements, public feedback and existing data from Groton. And whereas to ensure that the plan was in line with public opinion, an affordable housing advisory committee was formed consisting of town council, RTM and public members, and whereas the plan is referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and input, and a public hearing of the town council was held on April 5th, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town council hereby adopts the final Affordable Housing Plan as presented, so moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Franco. Councilor Bumgarner, Borlan?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that it's noted for the record because it says...
Um, I just want to make sure that it's noted for the record because it says as presented. And, uh, Council McBride brought up some amendments that should be put in there. So I have trouble, you know, saying that as, as written, um, but I would say with the amendments would be more appropriate.
That's fine.
Yeah. I mean, we were assuming a lot down the road as people change hands. I think we should just make sure what we're passing is transparent. So my, my recommendation would be to put, um, Council McBride, if he wants to restate his amendments, uh, in, um, but also after the folks spoke tonight, you know, really we do not have enough affordable housing. We have a lot of, uh, we do have a section of, of affordable senior housing, but not , uh, low income affordable housing, um, for people with children. And even the senior housing is lacking. So I really hope that we dive into this and as stated, that we bring around some of these folks around the table and really ask their needs, which I was asking for, and having more open dialogue so the folks can come speak to this. But I, I would ask McBride to restate his things and make an amendment if he chooses to...
We should, we'll also put the P Z C changes in there.
Right.
The Planning and Zoning Commission changes will be made too.
I'll make an amendment. And it's not necessarily that I, I'm making the amendment, uh, I'm making the amendment based upon the council's recommendation to include these because it was a council decision.
Correct.
It wasn't my decision, uh, to add the rental assistance, to move it from category three to category two, and to move the first time home, home buyers program from category two, category two to category one.
I'll second that.
Moved by McBride.
That didn't include the planning and zoning.
No.
Should we add the planning and zoning?
Yes.
Can you state what the planning zoning section is then, John?
I, I don't have the comment. It's the comments that, uh, Council Bum Gardner read, but...
Yes. Um, I have it in the packet and then also that technical change with the, the public lands.
Yes, that's the other one. So maybe we should, I'll retract my second. We'll just keep this a rolling amendment until we're complete.
I have it right here.
You, you have it?
Yep.
I expect nothing less.
Come on it. Just, just read it?
You want to just read it?
Okay, I will. Um, the plan, uh, the plan should clearly articulate that it applies to the whole town inclusive of all zoning districts. Energy, energy efficiency measures should be addressed in the plan. The negative impact for availability of existing housing caused by short-term rentals should be addressed in the plan. And that's the P Z C recommendations.
Okay, so that'll be moved by McBride and then seconded by...
And Andre had one.
Yep. And, right, are we all just collective amendments here? And, um, public, so, but, and to enshrine the Conservation Commission's recommendation that the terminology utilized in the plan be changed from public land to available town-owned land.
I'll second all of that.
Okay. A la carte.
The minutes taker is, uh...
Okay. So that'll be moved by McBride and seconded by, uh, Bordelone. Council Bordelone?
Um, just for the town manager, could you just send out a new, uh, hard copy of this so it can save when, once the amendments are added?
Sure. John Reiner's listening in on his trip home, so, uh, Director Reiner, please send out an updated copy.
Yeah.
He's on right now.
All right. So we'll vote on the amendment first. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Then we'll vote on the main motion as amended. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
And Director Reiner did acknowledge hearing that and he will send out an updated copy.
Okay, thank you. The suspense list.
I'll read. Resolution establishing the fiscal year twenty twenty-two suspense list, whereas the state law requires that once a year, a list shall be compiled of taxes that should be suspended. And whereas the accounts which have been determined as uncollectible, collectible, have been contacted numerous times with no response. And whereas placing uncollected items on the suspense list helps avoid wasted money and staff time. And whereas the taxpayers remain liable, liable for all amounts that are placed on the suspense list, now therefore be resolved that the following amounts be added to the suspense list as reported to the town council. Town, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and five dollars and fifty-four cents. Sewer district, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Mumford's Cove, four dollars and two cents for a grand total of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to the Colonel Ledgird School Property Short Term Tax Agreement.
I can read this.
Council Jones?
Resolution to approve the short-term fixed assessment agreement for the former Colonel Ledgird School property, whereas the town has been marketing the former Colonel Ledgird School property for over a decade. And whereas a public hearing was held by the town council and the sale of property was authorized by the town council and not vetoed by the representative town meeting. And whereas the town of Groton entered into an option to purchase for the eventual purchase of the property by Bell Sight Development LLC on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas the Groton Town Council approved the concept plan for the property. And whereas the short-term fixed assessment agreement was contemplated in the option to purchase agreement for the property. And whereas the town council approved the short-term fixed assessment agreement at the town council committee of the whole meeting, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. And now therefore be it that resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to sign the short-term fixed assessment agreement with Bell Sight Development for the former Colonel Ledgird School property as presented.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Westernwell. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion to adjourn.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Casiri. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions were adjourned at ten oh nine.